We are going to start in about five or six minutes. We have two council members who are stuck in traffic, who didn't read the city's website that indicates where the traffic's going to be, or listened to it on the radio. So we are waiting for them to show. And so know that you all are well informed, and a couple of our council members weren't. So welcome, and we'll get started as soon as they show up, okay?
...
Good afternoon, everyone. It is 3:07 a.m. on today, Tuesday, May the 31st, and we are calling this meeting to order. It's terrific to see this many people in the audience here to listen and hear what's going on in the city. We appreciate all public comment and all opinions on strategies that are going to be discussed today. Generally speaking, today is a strategy workshop. It is not a workshop in which we will be taking votes on any of the issues. They're presentations, information, and for future consideration on a vote. So your opinions, your ideas, your comments are greatly welcomed. We're glad you're here today. And with that, we will open up the public comment section of the agenda today. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the deus, begin by stating their name and address, or single member, district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. So I will open it up for public comment. Are there individuals here who would like to offer any public comment on any item other than the items that will be discussed during the regular workshop itinerary? If so, please come forward. And where are they going to speak from, over here today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no one come forward for the public comment section of the itinerary, we will move into the workshop itinerary, and we will start with item A, the overview of the planning workshop. Daniel, you're on.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This part of the, as far as the workshop itself, it really is to kind of give an update on the priorities that city council had established, kind of the guidelines and the directive the city staff has received from the city council. So this is the opportunity, opportunity at this point to review those projects and have some discussion about maybe leaving the priorities the way they are. Actually, we've had the same priorities for the last five years, they were confirmed this past year. So we'll have a little bit of a discussion afterwards to see if there's anything that will change. We are going to be looking at different things today, not just the update, but possibly the possible, possible funding sources that we may want to consider. Again, this is a workshop, no decisions being made, but an opportunity to really garner the input from all the council members and get a little bit of a direction moving forward. So that's the, kind of the overview. Tina, as far as finance, will be doing the revenue and expenditures, the American Rescue Plan update. She'll also be going over some of the capital improvements and the CIP, followed by, immediately by the three strategic priorities that the city has had for the last five years. We'll have, Tina, you'll move that to the next one. What we'll have is going to be, the, the three priorities have been infrastructure, economic development, and public safety. You'll, you'll see that as far as infrastructure and public safety, those are the parts that are the, the expense to the city. The economic development part of it has always been the discussion that we've had that actually addresses those expenditures. What do we need to do in order to ensure that we can minimize the burden on the, on the taxpayers, to leave the tax rate the way it's been? And by the way, the tax rate has not changed over the past decade. So that's always been a concentration for me.
Do you want to repeat that, and then talk about that number? I think you need to emphasize that.
The, the tax rate has not increased, has not changed over the past decade, and that's at 7.76 per 100 valuation. So again, that is something that this conservative council has looked at and always said, hey, we want to make sure that we maintain the, the rate. We don't want to put more of a burden on our citizens, so let's take a look at what we need to do to make that happen. But with us, in the same respects, we also know that we have a lot of needs that need to be addressed. Infrastructure is the biggest one. The biggest complaint we have is streets. We hear it all the time. So on our end, we want to make sure that we address the needs that we have for the community, again, keeping in mind the tax burden as well. With that said, I guess I'm not, there you go. So today, we'll have Shane or Patrick will be coming up here talking about the drainage, the streets and the, on the infrastructure portion of it. And of course, Allison Strube, or Water Utilities Director, will be giving us an update on the water and wastewater. Economic development, we have Guy Andrews, and also, actually, Aaron Benoy is covering for John, who is out on vacation this week. Again, a lot of great information, a lot of great updates as far as where we are, and also some of the needs that we'll have in the future to continue addressing the needs we have right now. Tina, you'll go to the next one? So again, as I mentioned a while ago, the current strategies that we've had, the strategic priorities have been in place for five years. Other priorities will be discussed at the end of the workshop, after the presentations have been made. And at that point, we'll be finalizing strategic priorities and some funding, funding options that we may want to look at.
No funding decisions will be made?
No, ma'am, no funding decisions today. So again, with that said, that is the, just a really quick overview. I will open this up now to Tina, and I'll pass it to you, ma'am.
Thank you. Tina Dierski, Director of Finance. City's property tax rate, again, is at 0.776 per $100 valuation. Last year, our certified values came in at just over $5.5 billion. At a 98% collection rate, that means we budget almost $42 million, with about $5 million of that going to debt service and the remainder to M&amp;O. We did see a 2.3% increase for this fiscal year.
And that is with all the new appraisals that's out there? Or is this the most, the most current one that is driving our current budget?
This is the current budget, the year that we're in currently.
Have you been provided with numbers for the 2022-23 projection from the Tom Green County Appraisal District to determine what percent increase might happen for next year's or this upcoming budget year?
And speaking with the chief appraiser, citywide values increased by, on average, about 30%. Statewide, they increased by 25%, so we're not alone with that. We did receive our very, very preliminary rough estimates as far as valuations, but we expect that to change quite a bit because we haven't pulled out the tiers, we haven't pulled out debt service. There's so many things, you know, people are appealing, we're still in that process, and so we don't really have a final number for that. We don't receive that until July 25th, usually.
So you have no numbers, projected numbers, for our 2022-23 budget?
I'm not comfortable throwing a number out there, but I would say it would be at least in the area of $2 million of increased revenue to the city.
And so this past year, what was the dollar? It's a 2.3% increase in the current budget year, you're saying, so what kind of dollar increase was that?
Do you have that? Kimberly, I want to say it was about 1.2...
Remember, it went down to $800,000. It was less than $1 million in terms of what we actually saw for the budget. So we didn't even hit a million dollars. If I'm not mistaken, it was 870-some thousand dollars that we actually put into the budget for property tax dollars over the previous year.
Yes, Kimberly's going to look that up just to confirm, but I think you're correct. That's in the ballpark where we were.
And the state law is what? Is it relates 2% increases before it goes to the public for a vote?
Three and a half percent.
So if the Tom Green County Appraisal District keeps the overall appraisals below 3.5%, then that number is the number we accept. If it goes over that number, then we have to take it out to the public to vote to determine if they're willing to accept the overall appraisal increases.
Yes, they, they allow you also a three-year look back. So for example, last year, we only hit 2.3%, so you could capture that 1.2%. It's, it's kind of a complicated calculation, but it's some number you could recapture from last year, or the two years preceding. Of course, SB 2 went into effect 2019, so we don't actually even have a full three years behind us. But, but yes, it would be capped at that three and a half percent, plus maybe a little bit more for recapturing from last year. And at that point, you would either have to lower the tax rate to whatever that tax rate calculates to that keeps you at that cap, or go to the voters.
But I will repeat also, the city's percentage has not increased for over a decade, 10 years. So we have maintained a .776 property tax rate for over a decade, so there have been no increases.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Proceed.
And this is just your chart depicting and showing that growth. The 2020, 2022 property tax revenue is projected in this chart, but that just kind of gives you a graphic representation of where we were.
Describe M&amp;O.
Maintenance and operations. And so we put 9.36 cents of our tax rate towards debt service, and the .006 to the new street construction fund, and the remainder goes for maintenance and operations, for regular expenditures. Sales tax, as of May, we were over budget by $1.2 million, projecting flat to year end, or not flat, pardon me, projecting with a 4.63% growth rate, which has been our average growth rate. At year end, we'd be about $22.5 million in sales tax revenue, leaving a surplus of $2.1 million.
Not choosing the plan that's out there for the balance of the month?
That's based on budget, what we budgeted.
But we budgeted sales tax down, so the question mark is...
Yes.
The year-to-date growth currently is 4.63%, but what are you using? You say year-to-date is 4.63. What are you using to determine the balance of the year? The budget, or last year's actual sales tax?
It's based on the year-to-date growth rate average.
But last month, it was down .75.
Right.
So you don't know whether we're going to continue to be conservative and flat, or whether we're going to...
That's correct.
Be the 4.63%.
The negative point, 0.75 is factored into the average as well. So this is just a projection. We're not planning to be here at year end, but...
No, but we need to understand what the projection is, what it's based off.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it based off a plan? Is it based off of last year's... Is it based off of last year's actuals? What is it based off of? We need to know the trend line.
It's based off of our current year growth average. And this is just the chart, again, depicting that growth.
Which when we look at that and you look at San Angelo and we look at the other cities that we compare to, our growth has been substantially less than the other five, four cities that we compare to for this year. Correct?
Yes. And the next chart, again, is just that month-over-month revenue trend, just showing how we've, you know, month-over-month for each fiscal year, how that looks. And if there's no more questions on either of those, we'll move on to general fund performance for the current year. Property tax is at 98% of what we budgeted, sales tax at 61%, we're currently 58% through the year, so again, that's positive for this fiscal year. Alcohol and bingo tax at 56%.
Why is that not, why, why is that not trending as well with the rest of the sales tax number?
Alcohol and bingo tax is somewhat, the alcohol tax is somewhat seasonal, and the bingo tax comes in quarterly, so this is only two quarters worth, and excuse a little bit.
Yeah, but it's, but every time we go into budget session, you basically, that seasonality is based on the, the, the plan anyway, the budget, because the budget would be based off of the trend line from the previous years. So the question mark would be, with that in mind, you would assume we would be at 58% and not 56% because we base off the trend line, and that trend line would have been last year's performance.
So we see alcohol tax usually spike during summer months, and so it, it should catch up by year end, is what we would expect.
I know, but my point is?
We don't budget on, we don't budget seasonality based on a monthly basis.
You don't base it off of last year's numbers, which are seasonal numbers?
We, we do it on an annual basis though, not monthly. And so in those summer months, when we see more revenue than we would in the winter months, it should help us catch up to where we budgeted year-to-date.
Okay.
And then charges for services, is that 41?
I want to go back up to front size tax, because we have had all of these new people come into town laying fiber everywhere, and so the question mark is, all of those people that are bringing fiber to the city, do they pay the franchise tax so that in our next budget, we would start to see more franchise tax being collected?
They, they are required by state law, according to Teresa, to pay franchise tax if they're using our rights of way.
And they are?
Yes.
And so?
We do receive franchise tax from Sudden Lake and Frontier.
Well, we already do from Sudden Lake.
Yes.
But we have two or three other companies that are in Town Lane Fiber, I would assume that they too would be adding to our franchise tax dollars?
Once they, once they start having sales, it's based on their total revenue. So I think that they're not quite at that point yet, but at that point, yes, they would be required by state law to admit.
Do we need to be contacting them to find out when they anticipate that they?
That, I might ask Brandon who the onus would be on, do you have any idea if that would be?
I can look at the local government code sections on and see.
No one can hear you, you need to speak into the microphone if you would, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll have to look into that and see at what point they're supposed to either contact us or, or we reach out to them.
We need to know for our plans for 2022-23, what to anticipate?
Yes ma'am, that's a good question.
Okay, thank you. Now you can go on to charges for service, and my question is, why is that down so much?
So a large part of it is that we haven't received the $1.7 million that's been budgeted from the county with Shane and his street reconstruction, or I guess it's not, street seal coat project. So that's a big part of it. Ambulance revenue lags a month, and so that's usually about $300,000 per month, but I do know from speaking with Chief Brody that ambulance runs are down this year, and so he's not entirely sure that we'll make that revenue budget this year. And then municipal courts, another big.
So that, is that in charges for services or other sources?
Those are all under charges for services.
So talk about the municipal court numbers.
They're down quite a bit from last year, and they are at, let me see what percent of budget they're at.
I have 43% as of the end of April.
That's correct.
They're 43% of their budget, which would be under the budget by $1,394,901, under the budgeted dollar amount.
That's correct.
And what does that mean?
I can't really speak to that myself, it would be a question for the department, but I would think it would mean that tickets and fines and fees are down in general.
Daniel, can you talk to that subject?
Yes ma'am. Yeah, the, the, and I hate to reference it as, basically when you go out there, we receive our fine revenues through tickets that are written, you know, so the numbers have been trending down as far as the number of tickets. We've taken a look at that, as far as the number drop-off, I believe the number's like 10,000 ticket drop-off over the past five years. And that's, that's significant for us because we see that revenue number drop quite a bit. And again, that's something that of course is addressed through the, through the police department, but that's what we're seeing right now.
So when it, it's, so when we miss that revenue dollar amount, which is the 1 million, I just said 1,394,000, so when we don't hit that revenue source there, then what happens? And where's that money come from to make up for that shortfall?
It's all general fund, ma'am. I mean, basically, the monies are coming from the general fund, which this, this item, of course, anything going into the municipal corp as far as the fees and what have you, is included in the general fund, so we project for that, that revenue. And when that revenue drops downward, we have to decrease our expenditures on, on the other side, or move monies around to cover the expenditures necessary for that, for that one area. So again.
What pays for the overhead of municipal court?
A lot of it does come, and I mean, basically, has come in through the, through the fees or the fines, that it's actually covered those expenditures for the past, I mean, for the longest time, actually.
Yes, we budget, we, we group municipal court in under public safety in, in our blue book and in our financial statements, and so that general fund revenue is what covers any of those expenditures.
Okay, do I have questions from other council members at this point concerning this general fund revenue? Because this is the big, these are the big dollars. This is what funds a lot. So do you have questions concerning this revenue? Because this revenue will be the same line items that we use to figure out what we can or cannot afford in the next budget session.
Question, ma'am.
Yes, please.
For whomever, Tina, Daniel. If we have to make a transfer to cover the shortfall in municipal court, does that just come out of reserves? Is that, we just pull it out of reserves? Do we have a savings account for that specifically? Where, from where does that money come?
Actually, I mean, yeah, I mean, it definitely could come from reserves, because we do have our fund balance that's built up, and we have a healthy fund balance, but again, we want to make sure that we maintain that, especially for our credit rating, we want to make sure that that fund balance is where it is. So yeah, it does affect us that way. I mean, we have to, we have to use some of those monies.
Either reserves or by reducing expenditures in other areas, or obviously increasing revenue in another line.
Okay, thank you.
Lucy?
Tina, you said that they, that the municipal court revenue was down from last year, so last year it was one point, we're down 1.3 million?
That's this year's budget, it's actual revenue from this year's budget, but we were down last year and the year before as well.
And then going into next year, we have already received revenue budgets from the departments, and they have, they are projecting a $70,000 decrease next year as well.
Say that again, Tina?
$70,000 decrease for their revenue budget for next year.
22, 23, okay. And do, do you happen to have at your fingertips what the decrease was in 21, 22, and 2021? Do you happen to have that?
In the actual budget?
In the, yeah.
Actual performance?
Yeah, the actual performance, what we actually did receive?
Kimberly has that, just one second.
Give us the past two years.
21 to 22, a decrease of $65,000.
From the plan?
The budget.
Yeah, but what was the actual from the year before? Because budget's just a number we put out there. What I want to know is actual revenue versus actual revenue. What was the actual revenue? And the decrease in the revenue, not the budget?
She's, she's going to work on that, just give us one second.
Meanwhile, Karen has a question.
Okay. You may have already mentioned this, and if you did, please excuse me, but I would like to know what, what you can attribute to the shortfall to over a period of three years. Is it capture rate on tickets issued, or people are just behaving better?
Well, with speaking with municipal court, I think it's a combination. Less tickets being issued, I don't, I can't speak to the behavior element, that would be a question for PD or municipal court. But looking at the number of tickets issued, we've looked at that recently, and that has absolutely decreased as well. We're trying to think of the best way to find that, so she's going to pull up the year-end blue.
Your blue book, where's your blue book?
The year-end blue books and compare those. In the blue book, it's a grouping of several accounts, and so that's what's making a little bit more.
Well, in our blue book, all we see is one line that says municipal court.
Right, that contains multiple accounts that add up into fines and fees. Do you want me to move on to expenditures while she looks, or just wait?
No, I don't, I want to wait.
Okay. So 21 actuals was 2,171.
So the 1920 budget, actual?
Actuals, yes.
Was 2,527. Then the next year, which would have been 2021, was 2,171,000. And right now, the projection for 21, 22 is what?
We don't have a good way to project that?
Well, right now, year-to-date, you're at a million bucks, and so you're, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, seven months into it, and you're a million three off of it, so if you're seven months down?
Yeah, if you want me to just do a straight line monthly basis?
I do, yeah, that'd be great, Tina.
200,000 a month.
Of the year before?
Of what they budgeted.
So not, so 660,000 short of the budgeted number?
Yeah, so that 1.39 at year end would probably read somewhere around the 660. Just flat, flat line calculation.
Any other questions or comments?
Rough, rough estimate, but gives you an idea.
Yeah.
And not seasonal, yeah, I don't know how seasonal that would be, but.
Okay, all right, go ahead and move on to expense, expenditures.
Public safety are, they're right at 58% of their expenditure budget, which is where they should be at this point in the year. Public works is at 41%, public services at 52%, development services at 57%, neighborhood and family services at 56%, health at 60%, government at 54%, and administration and transfers both at 58%.
That's a percent of the budget, not a percent of actual from the year before, correct?
That's correct.
And on the one, public works is 41%, can we talk about that for a minute?
Yes.
Not that we don't mind being less, but?
Right.
We would expect that it would not be 41% by the time the year was over, so let's just talk about what we're anticipating.
The biggest accounts under public works are street and bridge, and so I am guessing that is seal coat? Oh, here's Shane. Shane to the rescue.
We haven't, at this point, we haven't done seal coat project yet, and so that's, that'll be about 3.5, 3.6 million, so that will, once that expenditure comes out, we'll see, we'll see us trending almost right where, right where we're supposed to be.
And so the seal coat program that's not in that right now, talk about when it's going to start and when the public will start to see the seal coat program.
The seal coat, HA5 has been applied already, which is a small portion of the actual seal coat program, but the traditional chip seal will actually start here in about two to three weeks. We're expecting them to mow bin about, between the second and third week in June and start the program. So we, we should start seeing, seeing that happen here pretty quick. And then, of course, by the time they get that out, it'll be mid-July, mid to late July, by the time they get through with that, and we'll start seeing, then we'll start seeing those invoices come in, and we'll start paying, paying those invoices. And so probably, as we start finishing up in, into our budget season, we'll start seeing those numbers climb up closer to the percentage of year-to-date.
Do you want to remind everybody where that seal coat is being done?
The majority of the seal coat work will be done in the Southland and around Lake Nazworthy in that area this year. There'll be a few other streets around town, but that's the majority of the work will be in those areas.
Okay. Other questions for Shane while he's here as it relates to public works and the expenditure line on current budget? Okay, all right. Oh, wait, Lucy?
Can you explain to me the health that's at 60%? What is, does health, what is it? What's that?
Yeah, health is the, the health department, and that is on the health administration line, which has an encumbrance, which means it's, it's been committed but not yet paid, so it's just making it look a little overinflated.
Meaning, what, what do we do there?
That means that there's a, that means there's a contract in existence, and that we've budgeted the full amount of the contract, but not yet actually paid the entire contract, and so that inflates the, the percentage a little bit.
And that contract is with who?
He's where we run the health department, so there's those kinds of things, sometimes for medication, for drugs that we get in.
Talk into the microphone if you would, please.
So, did you get all that drugs that we get in, or Shannon that we work with for the health department facilities?
Other questions from council? Okay, move on.
Here's our bar chart that we show you every, every year depicting that property tax is, makes up 47% of our general fund revenue budget, with sales tax coming in second at 25% of our general fund revenue budget, followed by other taxes and then miscellaneous, charges for service and miscellaneous revenues.
Okay, so I think this is one that, oh, council, we need to really pay attention to, because these are statistics and percentages that we really need to focus on. In 2017, our, the amount of the money spent from property tax and sales tax for public ser, safety was at 54%. So that means that of all the revenue we take in from property tax and sales tax, you combine those two lines, 56% of that money pays for fire and police, and it has increased from 54% in 2017. So that means where most of the general fund revenue, or the funds that we have to work with, has decreased, even though the revenue has increased because a larger percent of it's going to public safety.
Well, and ma'am, another point that, that probably is worth making, is what our total revenue is. total revenue is just from the ad valorem tax, which I believe is about 37, 38 million.
Well, that's why I said the combination of property tax, which increased about 800,000 last year, I don't remember from two years ago, and then the sales tax revenue, if you combine those two, that revenue dollar amount, 58, 56% of it has gone to pay for the needs that we've all approved for fire and police. It's growing.
So I think sometimes the, the citizens think that what they pay in property tax covers a lot of things. It does not cover the police and fire budgets.
Correct. It takes all of that, plus some of the sales tax dollars.
Plus a good bit of the sales tax to cover that. So, yes, so just so everybody's aware, you know, all the property tax that is paid does not cover the police and fire budgets.
Yeah, Tommy, you're correct. The property tax revenue budget for this year is less than 37.4 million dollars. The total public safety budget currently is 45.7 million.
I think strategically, what we need to be focusing on is, we need to keep that percentage at 56%. We can't keep letting that number grow. Our revenue's growing, so it becomes a bigger dollar amount, so it's not reducing the dollar allocation. It is living within that number and making sure we maintain that, 'cause we can't keep doing that. Does that make sense? Okay, and then expense by type. This is the other item that we need to really focus on as city council, and that is already, if you combine property tax dollars, sales tax dollars, and look at all of the personnel that we have, inclusive of fire and police, and all of the personnel that we have, now takes up 71% of the revenue. So if you look at those numbers, you see what's left over to run the city with. Would that be correct? Explain it in better terms than I'm explaining it.
Well, personnel's always gonna be, of course, the largest expenditure for any city. At 71%, that's about, that's about the number that you have, but you're, you're correct. As far as the remainder of the amount that's left over is to, is for the other functions of the city. Of course, personnel is throughout all the city, and all the departments, and all the divisions, you know, so it comes out of those. But there's an amount, the 29% that's used toward the, the running of the, the city as well.
And I would say, Daniel, that this, I would point out that this is personnel in the general fund, and the general fund would be more personnel-heavy, because we provide more services from the general fund than goods.
Yes, but that's where, exactly, but that is where the revenue is. So your property tax dollars and your sales tax dollars are in that general fund, and of the total revenue that we have to work with, which is that first sheet, if you go back to that first sheet. Right there. So of that actual amount and the forecasted amount for the budget, those are the dollars which we have to work with to pay for fire and police, which we've already said is 56%, plus, which is inclusive of the overall personnel, which is 71% of that revenue. So of all of that revenue, you can see the largest percent of it is your property tax dollars and your sales tax dollars.
That's correct.
And so the city is, doesn't generate revenue, it accepts revenue, it receives revenue. And that's the revenue that will be used to pay for all the overhead and expense of running and managing the city. Okay, just to be sure.
And finally, for the financial side of things, the American Rescue Plan Act, as you're aware, we, you as council designated 8.5 million of that for the College Hills drainage portion of the project. There's still an unassigned balance of just over 8.1 million dollars that council still has discretion for using for other projects. They have to be obligated by December 31, 2024, and they must be expended by December 31, 2026. And there are some limitations on the uses of the funding, but I think we'll delve into this a little bit deeper after Daniel has time to talk with you about what your priorities are during the meeting.
Well, when we get through the other presentations and stuff. So, we're not making any decisions on funding today, so it's just the number. We're not making decisions today on funding.
That's right.
So let's just be clear. All right, next.
Next, we'll move into the Capital Improvement Plan portion of our discussion. Department directors and managers are asked every year to submit any projects that they feel will be, needed to be completed within the next five years. And so these projects that we've gathered are based on their presentations and their recommendations. Currently this year, they have submitted 47 active projects, and the amount of 448 million dollars that they believe will need to be either started or completed within five years. And 51 projects totaling 100 million dollars that are further out beyond that timeframe.
And the active projects, the 448 million, they've been funded? So how could they be active projects if they're not funded?
They're, they're considered active if they, if the department director or manager that submits it believes that it must be either started or completed within a five-year time period. And so this list here is kind of showing you how those are broken out. Oh, I'm sorry. Kimberly's correcting me over here. Active means that they will, they believe that they will either start or complete it within the current year.
So, again-
Some are partially funded, but not fully, I'm sorry.
Because that's the confusing part. If we say we have 448 million out there that's active, it means that we have found the money to finance those. Is that correct or not correct?
The CIP is not a funding plan, it is a tool-
I know it's not, but that, your description of what that 448 million is, is, sounds like it's active, based off of Kimberly's. Say that again, Kimberly.
They've been begun, or about to begin, but are not fully funded.
So how do they begin if they're not fully funded?
That means that they'll probably be coming back to city council in the near term to find a way to fund it, or they might be paying for the design phase within the next year, and not necessarily the entire project.
All right, so we're gonna go through those now?
We can go into those, or we can focus on any of these general departmental, you know, totals, and delve into it over here if you want to.
What we can do is, we can start going through this list and, and asking questions about it, and then at the end, well, we'll, 'cause that's through 448 million right there. So, but it says active, and then proposed, and then totals 548 million.
Kimberly can actually pull up our software on the screen, if you'd like to get that into it, or we can have the department directors come up and kind of tell what are the big things in their line items. It's up to you however you want to proceed with that.
Well, let's start with our department managers coming up and describing from it, because I think that would be great.
You wanna start in this order with Allison?
We're basically saying, we have 448 million, we're either active or starting to, so I think, and there's partial funding or not funding, I'm not sure which is partial and what's not, but let's talk through it, because that's a big number.
Okay, Allison, we'll start at the top of the list with Allison. Let us know which project you'd like to start with on that list.
Oh, okay. For treatment plant improvement projects, these are ongoing maintenance items, so this is something that we budget capital dollars for replacement each year. This year, we do already have our contractor to replace the, the Clearwells, which is another CIP project listed in here. But the Hickory expansion and all of those type improvements work into this water treatment plant project.
And the timeframe on that, say that again.
Contracts are signed and executed, and notice to proceed has already begun. The Clearwells may not happen till later this year, till we get into the winter season. But we are already breaking ground, so to speak, on Hickory expansion and Clearwell construction, and material ordering. The North Concho River wastewater system improvement, so we've done wastewater trunk main improvements now up to Santa Fe Park or to the golf course itself, and then that's where our sulfur draw lift station ties into. This next portion of that wastewater improvement project goes through the park, near Central, or not freshman campus, near Central Campus, under the loop, and there is a lift station there, is our Shiloh Lift Station, one of our largest lift stations, and it would ultimately take that lift station offline and offload everything into the trunk main. That one is in design fa, or soon to be bringing to you for design phase, so that's why it's in the active category.
Lift station improvements, as Kim is showing on the screen, is just ongoing pump and motor replacement of our lift stations, wet well rehab. Basically, we put in close to 200,000, if not a little bit more, into lift stations each year, in just their ongoing maintenance. Back truck is a, one of our largest pieces of machinery that we own in the sewer department. It is, I think, a little over 400,000 dollars for that unit, but it cleans and, vacuum is in the name, but it does-
Vacuum a work.
Yes, vacuumed out wastewater in lines that get clogged up for various reasons, for rags, grease, any of those type of debris. Water reclamation plant improvements, so this is also, each year, we dedicate more funding to pumps and motors and large pieces of machinery at our wastewater plant. But this one is also very high, is a part of the Concho River Water Project. And so, as a part of my presentation later, we'll, we'll go through that. But it is to upgrade that facility to meet discharge quality requirements to dump into the Concho River. Hickory expansion project, that Kim was scrolling over, so as I've stated, the expansion project has started. The drilling of at least one well, we do have one drill rig set up and ready to go. And so we are currently in the active mode of expanding that project from eight million gallons a day to 12. And then the Lake Nazworthy Sewer System Project, again, is a part of the sewer expansion to the airport and Lake Nazworthy areas, to offload, one, to be able to handle additional capacity, reduce lift stations that we have in the area, and to provide the backbone of sewer service to an area that has historically not had sewer service. Are those the active projects that I have?
And just for everyone's information, most of your projects are either paid for from the water. You wanna describe the funding for these projects that's out there right now, Allison?
Yes, ma'am. All the funding from the water and wastewater projects come from ratepayers, not from any tax dollars. So they are all from the water and wastewater consumption and the usage by our customers. We do receive a little bit of funding from COSA DC through the half-cent sales tax, but that's dedicated mainly towards water supply projects, such as the West Texas Water Partnership.
Thank you.
So Mayor, that was 213 million of the 448. The next biggest one is 202 million dollars from engineering. Those two make up about 415 of the 448. So those are the two big ones, if you wanna go through engineering as well.
Yeah, and then they'll do better, more thorough presentations when they talk about their areas.
Yes, ma'am.
But since we talked about that big number, I think people have a right to know what the projects are-
I agree.
And the funding sources for those.
Within the engineering, there's some of these that, that kinda spill over into the water utility as well, too. They're not all street-related or traffic-related, but we do have the A&amp;M water line replacement, there's, there's quite a few of those. Of course, that is the entire length of A&amp;M, we just brought that to you at the last council meeting for approval.
That number was like 4.6 million, something like that, is that correct?
Yeah, it was 4.7 was the, after we, after we got the bid in. Yes, ma'am. And there's, there's quite a few. This is also for the, out there, Old Crystal Oval Road, out there, the, at the state, where the state is widening the road right now, we're having to design and actually replace the water, water and sewer, sewer lines out there underneath that roadway that they're rebuilding. And so that's part of, part of this as well, too. That's estimated at 5.2, I believe, 5.26.
That's just the utility piece of it, because the NPO picks up the other cost, right?
The state, the state is picking up the other cost through some of our NPO dollars as well, correct? Yes, ma'am. For the reconstruction of the road itself, we're responsible for the utility.
Right.
The next one is Randolph Water Line Replacement. This goes from the other side, just the other side of the river, which, actually, this side of the river, on Randolph Street, and will take it all the way to just north of the loop. It's an old cast iron main for replacement. And so that's, that's on that one, 6.9, 6.7 million estimated on that one.
And right now, do you have a designated timeframe or funding source for that one?
It's, they're currently in design on that, and the funding source would be the water utility.
Okay.
The next one, we just have street construction in general. We have several, several streets out there looking at future for design as well, in the design phase of it, as we come along. This is kind of a place, this is more of a placeholder for us, and so as we've had those streets, we have issues come up, like when we had the winter storm and we, and we had to go in and replace, you know, council authorized a million dollars for going in there and doing that work. That way, we have a placeholder within the CIP for basically general road construction. Estimated, again, it, just a little over 6 million, but again, this is more of a general placeholder, so we're not having to come back and amend the CIP out of turn or in a hurry. We, we have a placeholder where we can work on, do general streetwork as well, too. So, again, not necessarily an identified funding source as of yet, but those will be identified as needed, as we have this general placeholder. Because we do, the Rio Concho Project that we have out here going right now, was one of those that we actually were able to work under, under this line item, because they were not bond-funded dollars, they were actually O&amp;M dollars that we had, had saved up to, to do this roadway, so, do this project with. Stormwater quality improvement projects, we have those identified, some of those identified, the Foster Road, we have another, oh, it's just general, another general construction. So again, if we do find the money, and of course we do, we've been watching for hazard mitigation grant dollars and things like that, where we can start looking to address some of those issues, like the Foster Road issue, and some of those that we have identified in our hazard mitigation plan. And so as, and we'll talk about, a little bit about that in the drainage updates. But again, those, it's basically just a general placeholder for those type of projects as well, too. And as the funding comes available, that's when we would use them. But again, we're closely watching those grants out there to try to capitalize on those as we can.
So, most of the projects that you're talking about today are already funded projects, either through water-
Some of those, some of those were, these two were, these two are not necessarily funded, but all the water ones are, yes, ma'am. They're, or they're being prepared to be funded in the near future, as, as the design, designs are completed and we bid them out.
Okay.
Foster Road reconstruction, we have that in design currently right now. We do not have dedicated, a dedicated funding source for this, but again, we're getting it in design right now, again, hopefully looking for those hazardous mitigation dollars and those grants as they become available. And, and also, and I'll mention this a little bit later, but we're, we are closely watching a lot of grant opportunities right now with the new infrastructure bill coming down from the federal government. There's gonna be a lot of granting opportunities, and we wanna make sure that a lot of these grants, you have to have shelf-ready projects. And so we do have this project in design currently. So again, if we do have those granting opportunities available, that we can, that we can capture that. This is another stormwater project, the Sunset Lake and Parkview Lake dredging improvements. Again, we've been working on this, trying to save up money within our existing O&amp;M budgets to, to complete these projects, and we have enough money in our, in our stormwater fund balance right now. We, we're hoping, we have our fingers crossed to set aside to, to accommodate these projects right now.
What's the timeframe on that?
They're, they're currently in design right now. We hope to have those out this fall and be ready to bid. Early fall is, is our goal. If, if we can, we wanna make sure we- sure we dredge in the, in the winter months is, is our preference, so. Reconstruction of Jackson from Knickerbocker, the, to the railroad tracks to Knickerbocker on Jackson. This was, we have some set aside monies from when the Chick-fil-A, put in the new Chick-fil-A at that corner, portion of, yeah, there was, they had to allocate certain monies for, actually, in lieu of doing the construction work at that time. And so this has been, this is one of the projects that's on our list. It's, it's, we were looking at designing it in-house because it is such a short, small strip. However, currently, due to personnel issues or the lack thereof, we're probably going to have to look at getting an engineering firm to help us out on this one as well, too. So it, it should go in design here real soon. We have, I believe we got another two years before we would actually forfeit that money back to Chick-fil-A. So we want to make sure we get that done. And then, of course, now we're getting into, getting into some of our bonding projects here. Reconstruction of Avenue Inn from Sherwood Way to South Chadburn. Next one is Millan Overlay of Sunset and from Foster Road to Loop 306. We do have some, and there will be some reconstruction in that as well, too. It won't be all just Millan Overlay. It will be some construction. But again, part of our bond, part of our bond projects.
That is part of the bond, the $80 million bond project?
Yes, this, this is a bond project. The Millan Overlay of Smith Boulevard from Pulliam to Gordon is also one of our bond projects coming up. That will probably be in our year 10 letting. So that's, project still a ways out. It has not started design yet. Millan Overlay of Howard Street from Glena to Sherwood Way. And a lot of these, we'll go over some, well, we'll go over some of this with, in the presentation later. Again, another bond project. It is in design. We're at 90%. We should have, we should have finals in probably 90 days and be ready to bid, bid that project out. So that one will be coming up real quick. Millan Overlay of East Harris from Avenue Inn to Abe Street through the downtown area over to Bell Street. That is going to be a year 10 project in the bond project. Next one is Millan Overlay of Glena Drive, Edmund and 29th. Again, that-
Shane, when you say it's part of that, of $80 million, because I think we're in our, are we in our third year or fourth year of that?
We are fixing, I believe.
We're in the fourth issue of five.
Yep, yep. And it will be-
The fifth would go, is two years from today. So this is 2022. So in 2024, basically, would be the last-
The last, yeah, the last bond issue.
Which would be these that you've just talked about.
Yes. When I say year 10, that's the last issue. That's, that's correct. Yes, ma'am. This one on Glena, Edmund and Glena Drive, Edmund and 29th Street goes all the way from Houston Hart all the way to Chadburn. It's going to be a really large project as well, too. It is in design. We had the 60% design review about two weeks ago. And so we're in that process currently right now. Hopefully, that will be ready to go to bid this winter. And so we'll get that one done. Next one, Millan Overlay of Chadburn from Loops 306 to 43rd. That is in its final design phase right now. I'm not going to say 100%, but we're at 90, 99% waiting on, waiting on, working with Texas dot Rail Division for one final piece of the puzzle, which will basically take us from the railroad tracks there at the, just south of 67, because it's not 306 right there, Texas dot will let you know. But just south of 67th, railroad tracks all the way to 43rd. So that, that project is, gosh, we're just waiting on that one final piece of the puzzle, and then that one will be ready to bid. And then the next one, sewer main replacements. Again, just a, a general placeholder as, as we run into issues and have issues. That's just a general placeholder for that. Again, would come out of the sewer fund if, if those are identified and necessary. Stormwater Avenue P, that is now finished, and we're ready to close that one out. So, yes. And then reconstruction of College Hills Boulevard. Currently, the project just started. I noticed if you, if you're in that area, starting to see the congestion in the traffic. And we actually did have to close the road for a portion of the road today from nine to four, but it should be opening up here. Well, hopefully, it's opened up already. It's 403. So hopefully, it's opened back up and, and we're back up to two-way traffic again. So, but again, that project's just starting. Again, remind everybody, it's a 30-month project, so.
That's utilities and street total reconstruction, correct?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And dealing with the flooding?
And drainage issues. Yes, ma'am. It's, it's, it's a very large project for us. So very excited about it. Reconstruction of Bell Street from Concho River to Ballinger Highway, that has been completed. Have a couple of small sections of sidewalks. We've been waiting on utility, been working with utilities to try to finalize those and get the, get the last signal installation there at Rio Concho Drive and Bell Street. Get those signals up. But other than that, the road is complete. It's opened up, and it's actually pleasant to drive again. So we, we've anxiously been awaiting that. Next one, Millan Overlay of Southwest Boulevard. Again, this one is currently in construction, and we're kind of getting towards the end of it now, finishing up right there at the Low Order Crossing to the loop. We do have to re, we're going to have to rip out and rebuild the, the intersection at Green Meadow and Southwest. That's still left to do. It'll take place, they'll do half the road and then come over and do the other half of that intersection. And then, once that's complete, the only thing that will be left on that project to, to complete it will be working down there by Lamar Elementary at the railroad tracks. And we're, we are working with Texas Pacifico on that one currently right now, trying to coordinate the two efforts.
There's, someone had said to me that one of the, when Frontier was working on laying fiber on Southland, that they broke a big water lane, line, and consequently, water seeped underneath the new construction that we'd already done and created a big bubble there in the street from the excess water. Is that true? And if so, who pays for that since we just did it?
I have not, I have not been made aware of that. But if that is true, we will go out there and we'll, we'll find it out. But we will, we will charge them back for the repair of that. We will, if we have to cut that out and redo it, we will charge them back.
Very.
I believe that was a Green Valley and Southland.
I said Southland. I just didn't know where on Southland, sir.
Yeah, it buckled the asphalt there, but it was not new construction. But now they have finished with that small project, as I understand it.
Okay, okay. So it's, okay.
If you just look at that.
We'll, we'll take a look at it. And again, any, any repairs, we, any repairs we need to make, we'll either, they will either repair them, or we'll, we'll repair them and, and charge that back to them.
Because I think as we talk through all these projects, all of us are concerned that with the amount of work and money that we've put into these new projects, and we know that the damage that's being done by all these companies that are laying fiber, we're hoping that they've been told and know to get this stuff done before we redo these streets, because we can't afford to redo again.
Yes, ma'am. And unfortunately, some of these are, especially these new companies that are coming into town and/or some of the fiber, but we are working with them. We actually do, with all of our utilities, franchise utilities, we do actually meet with them for several months prior to, or actually during design, the design phase of any project. We meet with all franchise utilities to coordinate with them to make sure that anything that we're doing within our, whether it's water lines or sewer lines or street, if we're widening streets or adding sidewalks or drainage, that we are working with them to make sure that they're moving their utilities out of our way and that their utilities are being replaced prior to, if they need to be, prior to us doing any work on our streets. And so we do do that. Now, with the new installations and with these two new companies coming into town, that's, it's kind of throwing a wrinkle in our process. But we are reaching out to all of them and working with them prior to construction.
Questions for Shane?
I mean, I, this list keeps, keeps going on forever, so.
I'm going to stop right now, because I think there's a questions, comments from someone. Karen?
I have two questions for Shane. Early in your presentation, you mentioned several times that you're watching grant-
Yes, ma'am.
-possibilities for your department. And we all appreciate that, of course, so thank you for that. My question, however, is how valuable would it be and would it create further efficiencies in your department if you had a grant writer?
This is something Karen and I've asked a couple of times, because I feel like right now with the infrastructure bill that's been passed by the federal government, that the number of grant opportunities is larger than ever. And it really takes a keen focus. So I think, Shane, you reassigned someone in your department, right?
I have reassigned, I have reassigned our operations analyst to, to primarily focus on those. I'm not going to say that, that, that position or that person is actually a grant writer, per se. But, you know, I, as many of these opportunities are coming our way, we, we've had to shift focus of personnel to, to actually just watch them, all of them, because there are so many of them, and, and there's so many different requirements for each one of them. And so it's kind of been one of those things that we've actually had to assign somebody to do it. But a grant writer, somebody that is a dedicated grant writer, that that's what they do, and they've been trained to do, would be an amazing help.
Thank you.
Because though they, the techn, the technical portions of that is-
It's a special skill set, for sure. It is. My second question is for the public and me, as the newcomer. If you could give us an expanded definition of placeholders in your budgeting process?
In the CIP, in this, in our CIP process, for us to do work, the, on this reconstructed street, or to build a new street, or any of those things where we're going to expend large capital dollars on those things, it has to be, there has to be a project placed in the CIP before we can actually expend dollars on those projects. And so that's why we put these, call them a placeholder in there, to where we're talking about water, water main replacements, sewer main replacements, or street reconstruction rehabilitation efforts. That way, that we're not having to come back and amend the CIP every time something becomes available for us to do. Or, again, if there's an emergency or something like that, to where we need to get in there and do something quickly, it's already built into our CIP process. And so-
And the plan. It doesn't mean it's in, it'll say not financed or funds not designated, but it will list it as a project, and it will list it as an approximate dollar amount attached to that project, gets it in the CIP, and then-
And then if, if it is one of those, if it's something that is, that we're not, you know, that we haven't anticipated, and it goes over those dollar amounts, then, then yes, we will bring that back as an amendment to the CIP process before, before we'll actually move forward with that project as well.
Thank you.
And I will add, Karen, that the projects of a certain dollar threshold, the bigger projects, are required by our charter to be in the CIP before a department can complete them or start them.
Thank you.
Other questions at this point? Shane, do you, I think the largest dollar amount that was in that 448 million, which was that chart that we saw earlier, you have gone through and described, and I think you've exceeded that 448 million that has been, what they call, partially funded or funding designated. So I, you can go through the rest of this as you're doing your presentation if you want, or you can continue now and not have to do it then. So you, you decide. Since we're on it, might be best just to keep on going.
Yeah, I think we're wrapping up the engineering here. It looks like we're wrapping those up. So again, another one here, we have the, of course, the full-depth reclamation of Rio Concho, which is going on currently right now. We're keeping our fingers crossed. This is the new, the new full-depth reclamation process. It's, it's not, it's not a new process, but it's, this is a, it's the first time we are using it, and it's also kind of an improved version of the old process. And so we're looking at that, keeping our fingers crossed. Is, this project has moved very quickly. And so, and we believe based on talking not only to Reese Albert, but also their subcontractor that they brought in that specializes in this process, and looking at some of the test results that we're seeing on the base, the base right now, road base right now, it's really looking positive. And the, and how quick they are able to do this and get the turnaround time is, is just amazing. They're, they're hoping, Reese Albert, if the weather holds, they're hoping to be through by the end of the week or first of next with pavement back on the ground. So-
Well, it's fast.
It, it is fast. So we're really excited about that process, and hopefully, we'll be able to use it in other areas.
Lucy would have liked that, didn't she?
Yeah, you would have gotten here faster, right? On time. Yes.
The next one, Millan Overlay of Johnson Street, again, part of our bond, bond funding projects. That is not in design yet. That'll be a year 10 project. We have started talking to engineering firms to look at, start, start the design work on it. But again, that, that's going to be a, a year 10 project as well. Another placeholder for water main replacements right below that. And then reconstruction, whoop. Oh, and then the downtown Chadburn, this phase two of the downtown Chadburn project. So, and that is actually, of course, the initial design was part of phase A, B, and C. And so all of those are, all of those are done. And, and we're just, again, trying to finalize some funding on, on that one project. But we believe that'll, that'll go here in the near future.
All right. Questions, comments? A lot of work. Yes, Daniel?
Yeah, quick comment, Mayor. He did all that without notes. He has it all memorized. He did that while I was known, so that's incredible.
Yeah, and we haven't even got into operations yet, so.
Great job.
Thank you. So on that 448 million that we were talking about, you can see that if you first glance at that, it seems like an overwhelming amount of dollars and amount of money. But the largest part of that is already in the game plan of funding. So the dollars were there, have been planned for. Okay. Next.
We'll switch back over to the presentation, please, Kimberly. Okay, so we will be publishing this draft CIP online and reaching out to the public for any comments, questions they may have.
Wait a minute, go back, because we did on that. Go back.
This one?
So we did water utilities, we did engineering. Let's hear about airport.
Do you want Kimberly to pull back up the website for him?
Sure.
No, you can't, no, no, Jeremy, you can't use it. You gotta pull Shane on this. You can't do that.
Yeah, it'd be good to pull it back up, so everyone's on the same page.
The only, the only active project I've got right now is our terminal security system, the camera upgrade to the terminal for $500,000.
And that's security, right?
That's security, yep.
For the terminal only?
Yep.
Or the gates included in that or not?
Yep. It includes all the gates, all the doors, its cameras, and a full security system. And that's being funded through the CARES Act, through FAA dollars.
What you might take the opportunity to do, Jeremy, is I know at the last city council meeting, we had someone offer some comments on some issues at the airport, which I'd like your feedback on that. You sent us all information on it, but I think the public should hear that information. So we're all on the same page on that.
We can do that. You want that now?
That'd be good.
Okay. I will have a memo out to you on, for your Friday package. I will have a memo out to you on, for your Friday packet, so you all get the full story. But basically, he was concerned with the condition of the asphalt. If you've been out there on the south side of the airport, down by what we call the precision hangers, there's two private hangers down there. They're not city hangers. We do have a ground lease with them. It's a raw land lease. But under the raw land lease, they're required to maintain that asphalt. So it's the hanger association's responsibility to maintain that asphalt, and not the city's responsibility. This individual was not aware, so I highlighted that, as he is one of the tenants to the hanger association. It did state in his lease that they are responsible to maintain that asphalt. He was concerned about a downed power line. It's not a downed power line, it's a communications line. And it just sits right on the peak. It's a, it's a frontier line. It sits on the peak of each one of the hangers. He was also concerned about the hanger door that blew off. We did have one hanger door that blew off. It was one of our T-hangers that Skyline leases from us. The hanger was not pinned and latched appropriately. That's why the hanger door fell off. We had a welder come the next day, pick it back up, reattach it, and it was working, operational. He did bring up the concern about the asphalt around our T-hangers, the Ranger hangers, just the rest of the general use area that is old asphalt. We're working through our tech stop ramp grant every year to do a crack seal and seal coat project on it to rejuvenate the asphalt. So we do have issues, but we have plans and funding to cover it.
Anybody have questions for Jeremy?
I'd just like to say that I sure do like it when he says he's got the funding for it.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
All right, and then the next, go back to that capital.
Next, we could look at operations. That was the next on the list. That'll be Shane, or Patrick.
Shane, do you have any projects that are only $500,000?
This first one.
Yes. We recently purchased a new emergency mobile command trailer for the city. We want to actually build a, basically a shed to put it in, a barn to put it in, along with PD's emergency trailer. Just leaving them out in the sun in the weather is really hard on them. Also, keeping the batteries charged and a lot of those other things that we need dedicated storage space. So this was placed into the CIP for, for basically a structure to cover those assets. Next one, City Hall Annex, 34 East Terrace, the old Standard Times building. This is looking for the rehabilitation of that, for the design, and also for the construction of the rehabilitation of that, for a new annex for the utilities, and basically all of public works, as well as the communications department and, and the fire marshal's office. And we also are looking at the possibility, with enough room, that we could actually possibly move the ELC operations into this facility as well, too. And they're currently out at the airport in the old FAA building. Correct. And so that's that one. And then the next one is the new, basically, we're currently working on looking at a new landfill, a new permitted landfill. And so this is the expenditure for that, estimated expenditure currently.
What's the timeframe on that?
Looking at three to five years. It's, it's a long drawn-out process, and it's, it just, it takes a while to get through the permitting and all the testing that you have to do, so.
How many years do you have left on the current landfill?
On the, technically, on the, on our post closure, closure and post closure report, we have eight years.
Well, we'll...
It's, yeah, and it's tough to judge when you start getting down to this. Our year-over-year intake at the landfill has increased quicker, at a quicker rate than what we have expected it to do. And so we've been trending a lot, a lot steeper than what we have. And so we're, but we're going to go with eight years.
Not looking at two, are you?
No, no, no.
Stop taking your trash out there, Tommy. You're causing a problem.
He was, he was hedging his bets. I'm thinking, is he going to come out with two?
No, 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 we're not, so. We're, I think we're in good shape, so. That was it? Okay.
That was it for operations. Up next on that list was Fort Concho. Carl White?
I have a question for Shane.
Sure.
Patrick and I talked a little bit about this, and this particular landfill. I was under the impression that we were going to use the area that was east of the current landfill to develop that. I wonder if you'd want to talk to that so that everybody's kind of aware.
We have a contract on that land to sell it?
Oh, to, yeah, just to the north. We, we've gone through the RFP process and are working through that right now.
We covered that in executive session, last meeting or the meeting before.
And so, yeah, and so, but we were looking at the land to the east as an alternative site as well for a new landfill, new permitted landfill. It did have some environmental issues attached to it. And so, the, and of course, ownership as well, too. But with this, with the area that we are looking at now, those, there wasn't any environmental issues with it, so.
Thank you.
I brought my glasses. Okay, this is Fort Concho, Berks 3 and 4, the mess halls reconstruction. This is an active project, and it is fully funded. It is underway as we speak. Should have substantial completion this year. Next project. Fort Concho Visitor Center. We have the, basically the site plan for how those could be redeveloped, Berks 1 and 2 into a visitor center and interpretive center. We have half-cent sales tax. That's how it's been funded. The next step is actual construction documents for that, so that's the next step. It is an active project. We do have half-cent sales tax again for that. To do the actual reconstruction and improvements, we will need to acquire some additional funding. But we intend to do fundraising for that.
How much of half-cent sales tax is committed to that?
It was a million dollars originally. There's about 800,000 left. Yes. So that won't cover everything, but it's definitely going to cover design and a good chunk of the improvements. But I have more.
So those were the active projects for Fort Concho. While Carl's here, we could go through his Parks and Recs projects, if you'd like.
These are active park projects?
Yes.
Yes. This is fully funded. It's ongoing. We're under the design phase of this project. It's largely a TPWD trail grant with some funding that, we had some matching funding, 40,000. The rest is matching funding. It's for trail improvements and trail signage and trail, trailheads, a shade shelter at Twin Buttes recreational lands, working with TPWD and the Bureau. It's ongoing. This one's fully funded. We had a gracious donor donate the funding for this, $75,000. It's ongoing. It's the next project we're going to tackle after we finish the renovation or the construction of the new playground at Unit Ed Park, which should be finished here mid-June. We'll begin that project right after that. It's an in-house project.
That's fully funded. I know the original Dog Park was, but are you saying this piece of the Dog Park Pavilion is also funded?
Only private funding. Riverbank, ongoing. We have a little over a million dollars for this. We're still under the design portion. We're having to make an assessment to see if we have to do the assessment to see if there's any impact on the river itself. So that's taking a little of the time. We have funding to do, and some grant funding, and some funding council previously allocated, as well as a little bit of half-cent sales tax to do this project.
What I want to make sure we do is, because a couple of the areas where there was riverbank stabilization, by the time we got to it, it totally collapsed, the sidewalk and everything. We need to make sure we don't get to the point it's collapsed, and it's a much more expensive project. So that, when we evaluate this riverbank stabilization, do we have a priority list still going on? So we can tack, you know, again, I don't want to see collapsed sidewalks into the river, as well as the trees. And, I mean, we just need to deal with it earlier on.
We do, and as you stated, Mayor, earlier in council meetings, there were some hotspots, as we called them. And Shane and his crew, as well as some others, addressed those to try to stop the erosion. If you walk that whole stretch of the river, we got issues that we need to address. And there's no way you can stop it all. This, we will eventually, but we're going to have to continually send some allocations this way. What they're doing with the design is actually designing a further piece, because you have to do these low mark, low mares, all these kind of things to show that you don't impact the water rising and floods and so forth. So they're trying to get more of it approved in this process, so that as you allocate funds, we'll be able to take those quickly for construction. So yes, we are looking at those hotspots still, though, to make sure we try to stop those as best we can.
We have some orange netting up at this point, on any of those areas?
I think most of that's down, isn't it?
There's a little piece left.
Is there one spot?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was earlier, in, like, it was last year or something, there were several spots over here, and they addressed those, so.
I don't want to see, we can't let them get that far down the road before we attack them.
We'll be coming back to y'all as, as this design comes in place, so then we'll start the actual construction. At that point, we'll probably be asking y'all to look further down the road in how we want to address those. We watch for the grants, but sometimes if we have some funding allocated, it makes easier for them to actually attack those grants when they come available.
Okay, and next up is recreation, for Carl as well.
This is the old Girls Fastpitch Complex site. We still call it 29th Street Sports Complex, but it doesn't even touch 29th Street. But it's along the river. It's, this is a renovation of this site, but it's really a very low-level renovation to provide open practice space for things like baseball, softball, soccer, football, and make a connection across the river to Kirby Community Park. It's, it's basically to allow us to make use, more usable this open space for sports practice, primarily for youth. And this is half-cent sales tax funded.
I think, Tom, we were looking at trying to figure out how we could get that bridge connecting Kirby Park over here to this facility. And I don't know if we got very far down the road.
We've had a couple of meetings about this, just within the past 60 days, what I'd say, and that is in the bid process.
Good.
Unfortunately, it's not our local vendor that's across the street.
Yeah.
Which is what irritates me, but yeah, it's in the process.
The design on this, Al Torres is doing in-house. So we're working on that, trying not to expend as much dollars. When we get to construction drawings and those kind of things, we may have to have some of that done. But Al's been doing all that work, and he's coordinating with Tom. It's in his district. And then we're not too far off from probably bringing that to council for a look at it and go from there.
Because I think that is a key part of making this really function. Okay. Good.
The new filtration system for the municipal pool. Council funded this a couple of months ago. The system is on order. It's to arrive mid to end of this month. And hopefully, we're planning to be back online early in July. So it's ongoing and it's funded.
And I think that's all for Carl's active projects. We can move on to the fire department. They did submit. Brody?
We want him to do that during his regular...
We can.
Yeah, chief, we can do that during the fire, and the police, the same thing, because those tie in a little bit better.
And animal services. I think Morgan or Bob Solis may be here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What I've submitted for rehabilitation of the animal shelter is a partially...
You have a very soft voice.
What I've submitted for the animal shelter rehabilitation is a partially funded project. I think we've proposed the total project cost to be $345,000. $200,000 is currently funded for renovations to the processing room and garage, to make it functional to how we use the building today. And then there's a $145,000 unfunded component related to a large HVAC improvement project to improve the air quality inside the building.
That's included in the 300,000, 350? Okay. That it on it?
Yeah, other than that, there was a project submitted by Facilities Maintenance. I think that's upgrade to cameras and security systems for $100,000.
And that's security for where?
Well, can you pull that up? Since this isn't my project, let me look at it. I think it's citywide and city facilities, that they're needing to upgrade the security equipment.
Okay.
And that came in at an estimated, an estimated $100,000.
It's cheap compared to the airport.
And other than fire, that was it for active projects.
Okay.
We'll switch back over to the presentation, and I'll quickly finish up, Mayor, and let you get on with it. Okay, so as I was saying earlier, we will put this draft online for the public to view, and so that they can send us any comments or questions they have. We will begin to compile those for you. We'll send them to you on June 17th. And then we'll have the public hearing and adoption at the Tuesday, June 21, City Council meeting.
What kind of comments would the public make? Talk through that. Because the CIP is established, so we have the CIP project established. What kind of input are we looking for?
So we try to get feedback from the public to see if they have anything that they want to tell City Council about any of these projects. And that's why we wait to have City Council approve it until after they get that feedback from the public to see if you want to have any other questions, or if you want to add something to the CIP, or, you know, something like that. You could direct department directors to do that.
Okay.
And finally, we're on, obviously, draft published online. We'll get that done pretty quickly. And then we'll compile those comments and send them to you, and we'll get the plan adopted.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I think we'll take a break. It's 4:37, and we'll take a 10-minute break. As we move on then into the top three strategic priorities. As we move on then into the top three strategic priorities.
Tommy has arrived. I guess you had road traffic again?
Shame him, shame him.
All right, we will continue on with this workshop itinerary, and so we are now at the top three strategic priorities. We will start with Shane Kelton and Allison Strube, knowing that they have presented a lot of the information already. So, but we will let them come forward and continue the conversation and add to what's already been presented. Thank you.
Mayor. It started here. Of course, we've already touched base on some of this stuff, but kind of give you an update on, on where we are and what's going on in the world of drainage throughout town. Of course, haven't had to worry a whole lot about that this year, but in years past had had some issues out there. And so I believe it was three years ago, three or four years ago, that we added the drainage component into, into our, into our priorities. And so as we, as we went back and we looked at it and took a, took a look at our master drainage plan from 2000, we had started some work in that, of course, you know, drainage is one of those issues that there's not any dedicated funding for that. It's as we can find funding either through excess sales tax or whatever those, wherever those fundings come from, or grant funds. That's when we start working on drainage. And of course, as we are doing, going through our, going through our street plans and, and the bond projects and other projects, if we can incorporate those drainage improvements within those projects, we're doing it at that time. So as we, as we look on here, some of our recent accomplishments were the East Angelo Draw Up Bell Street. We were able to accommodate that within the Bell Street design, and so we were able to take care of that. And then also the Avenue P detention basin. We were, again, through grant funding and through some stormwater funds and through actually some excess sales tax that had been set aside. Probably about eight or nine years ago, we were able to finish and complete this project. And so working through that and have got that done. We're also, of course, we, we talked about it a little bit ago with the College Hills project. We're taking care of some of the drainage issues there. And we're not going to be able to completely solve all the problems, especially at the Arroyo. But we are looking at significant underground drainage, getting that water underneath from the loop all the way to the South Fork of the Red Arroyo, getting that water off of the street. I believe the capacity that we have designed to, or were able to design to, would hold a 25-year event underneath the street. And so again, that will help tremendously during rain events in the College Hills project. And of course, you know, we're looking at some other, getting designs ready. We talked about the Foster Road project a while ago, trying to get something shelf-ready for, in case we get some hazard mitigation grants and things like that as well, too. And of course, again, we're continuing to, and one of the other projects that we're working on that was identified in the original, one currently is the lower crossing at Southwest by the McDonald's in Councilman Miller's district. So we're working through that as well, too, as part of the road, road reconstruction project. And so we're trying, we're addressing some of these as we go, go along. So again, but it's, it's a slow, a slow process. We did work with an engineering firm to update our 2000 master drainage plan, so we did get that, we do have that updated. We ranked the top 36 problem areas around town. Some of those were areas that we, that were identified separately in the old plan that we combined and kind of created some new looks to them. And we went through that and of course developed, developed a plan for how, a possible solution for 10 of those problems, the top 10 of those areas, and got, got opinions of probable cost on what those possible solutions would look like. Estimate, estimated $60 million to, in the opinion of probable cost for, to get those to where, again, none of them are going to be ever completely 100% fixed, but again, to at least provide a lot of relief in those areas, in those 10 areas. And of course, again, no designated funding, but as we find those dollars, whether that's through grants or other opportunities, we will again try to address those. And if any of them are street-related, as we, as we address those streets like we have in the past, we'll continue to, to address those. So that's kind of a quick rundown on the drainage and kind of moving into the streets. We, we talked through this quite a bit a while ago, but just a little bit of history. In 2015, we, we worked with Fugro Roadwear, Inc. to come in and do a street condition survey for us. They, they surveyed every street in town. They gave us a pavement condition index score for each street. And we worked with them to prioritize our bond projects that we're working through right now. And they went through, you know, and it, it was a, it was a process of looking at the condition of the, of the road, the classification, whether it was an arterial or a collector, and then also our average daily traffic as we work through that. And so as we went through that, we've got that done with that. City council authorized the funding of $80 million over 10 years. So every other year, we're, we're allocating 16 million in bond allocations to, to our reconstruction and rehabilitation projects. And we're going down that list, went through a lot of them a while ago. And then of course, too, back then, council did increase our operation and maintenance budget to help us address the seal coating program to where we can, we're, we're touching a street, we're seal coating a street at least once every eight years. And so to actually start a more robust maintenance program than what we'd had in the past. And then we do, we set aside about a half a million dollars a year for crack sealing program, pothole repair, small constructions, alley maintenance, those type of things is kind of where we set aside our, the funding for that as well.
Shane, the study, the Fugro study that was done in 2015, obviously, we've had a lot of development and a lot of construction going on since 2015. Is there anything in that 2015 presentation, prioritization of those streets? Is there anything that's changed that you think needed to be moved up or moved down based off of new traffic flow or traffic patterns based off of construction and development?
Right now, we're, the streets, the majority of the streets are in the prioritization list. I believe still, still are deserving to be where they're at. With the new development, we haven't seen a lot of actual traffic movement. I think there, there could be some things in the future that happen that, that could cause some movement of traffic. But currently, right now, our traffic patterns are remaining relatively steady, other than we are building a lot of new residential roads. We're not seeing a lot of new arterials or collectors coming in. And so that's where you're going to see the majority of your heavy traffic and your deterioration taking place. And so I think right now, the, the existing path that we're on is, is still a very viable path. So I, I think we're, I think we're still heading in the right direction with that. Just a quick recap again, completed projects, MLK Boulevard, the south end by the Sam's Club, College Hills, south of Loop 306 to Valley View, has been redone, West Concho Avenue. And then, of course, Bell Street is completed, active project, Southwest Boulevard, the Chadburn Street downtown, Real Concho Drive, and College Hills Boulevard has just started. It's just underway with the utility portion right now. Coming up soon, we have the Chadburn Street downtown phase two. Of course, we talked about this a while ago, the North Chaburn from basically the railroad tracks there at Fifth Street all the way to 43rd. Howard Street, again, and getting close to final design, Edma, Edmund Glen and 29th, kind of midway through design. Sunset, just now fixing to get started on that one in design phase. And then Cristoval Road, you will be seeing an item on this next council meeting to authorize the design of Cristoval Road. Looking, also looking at to apply for a DESIP grant for that Cristoval Road project as well, too. So that, we'll have that coming also before you at this next council meeting to apply for that grant.
Yes, Tommy.
Quick, quick question, Shane. On the Cristoval Road, is that from Chadburn Avenue L? Or is that Avenue L all the way out to where it hooks up with 270, or with 87?
This, this portion is from Chadburn to Avenue L.
Okay.
That's the portion that the city owns. From Chadburn to 87, 277 is, still belongs to the state, State Loop 378. And the state is currently, they're, they're planning on letting that bid for reconstruction in September. So at some point, that will, that will be widened and reconstructed from Chad, South Chadburn to 277.
As a part of the project, will any, any kind of curbing be done on Cristoval Road, Chadburn Avenue L? Some, some of it does not have curbing.
Curbing, curbing gutter.
Curbing gutter of any sort.
That will be part of the, in the design phase, we will be working with the engineering design firm to determine from the drainage aspect of it, because there are quite a few drainage issues in that area as well, too. Probably needing to widen the road in certain areas. And then, of course, add, we're looking at adding some shared use pedestrian pathways along that segment as well, too. And so when we look at that, some of that will require curbing gutter, some of it may not. But there, more than likely, we will see some new curbing gutter going in.
I was just thinking, you know, may greatly extend the life of the roadway, obviously, if it wasn't.
Raveling on the edges.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Tommy, you had some questions?
So Shane, you talk a lot about some is city property, some's county property, some is state property. Do we have any input on where the state prioritizes what they do next?
Through our MPO, the MPO board that we have, we do work closely with TechDOT in that group to, they actually, we identify areas that, in the state.
You campaign them together, make sure we're all.
Yes, we're all on the same page and we're all heading in the same direction.
We meet every other month, and each of those streets or projects is discussed, funding is moved around if for some reason something becomes like need to do it, so.
You'll get some phone calls sometime, and there's like that state property that's not ours.
Yes.
Similar to me and Patrick had an issue with a, a sign inside the city limits. But anyway, you answered my question. Thanks, Shane.
And maintenance, and they're, and we don't necessarily, on their maintenance dollars, we don't have a lot of input on their maintenance dollars, but a lot of their construction or, and/or sometimes their reconstruction, we do have quite a bit of input as well through the MPO, so.
Are there questions on, for Shane at this point, from any other council member? All right, keep going.
Okay. And then just briefly, you know, we, we did touch base on some of those, the year 10 projects, they're not on this list, but we did touch base on those in, in our previous CIP discussion as well, too. So just to let, let y'all know there. And so kind of changing, that's kind of the quick update for the drainage, quick update on the streets and kind of where we are and what we're going. Of course, we did, we talked about the, the seal coat that we're going to have come up again this year, so we talked about that already. So one thing that we wanted to bring up today is funding sources. If, if you'll remember, council, for the last several years, we've, we've talked about, you know, the importance of streets and the infrastructure and, and trying to address it and how we're going to address it. And so, and council has, has done an amazing job of, of working with staff to get us the funding that we need to really get started and really get working on it. Of course, you know, I know that each of y'all, because y'all internal, call and visit with us, y'all are, you know, continuously getting phone calls from citizens about streets and prioritizing streets and, and trying to move, move this forward and move our street program forward. And of course, we, we as staff want to be, we'd much rather be proactive in this than reactive. And so for years and years, I mean, we, we've kind of been in reactive mode and we're wanting to switch that into a proactive mode. And so as we're moving forward, you know, we want to talk about funding. And I think council has given us that direction in the past to, to look for alternative ways to fund things. And so we have, we've gone out there and we, and we've looked at multiple options and things like that. And, you know, currently, when we look at our current funding sources, we have the bond, bond project. Of course, we're fixing to bond the fourth of the, out of five of our bond projects. And so we'll have this one in two years, we'll have the last one. And so, you know, within the next four years, we're going to kind of, that's going to kind of be on the downhill slide of, of all the projects being completed and coming to completion. And then, you know, we do have our O and, our annual O and M maintenance that we use for maintenance for the seal coat program and for the other daily activities. And, and then we did city council last year in last budget, adopted the, was it .006, is that what you said, Tina? Out of the, out of that and dedicated that out of, out of the property tax for funding for the streets. And so that's kind of where we are right now from a, from a, a funding standpoint right now and how we're funding and how we're moving forward.
We have established a strategy for doing the major streets and then some of the artillery streets. So there is a game plan and a timeframe as just you proposed. Almost $448 million worth of projects that are out there. So we have spent tremendous amount of money on streets over the past four years. We've made it a key priority. We have made that a priority that says if we have money, we're going to give it to streets first because that has been one of the biggest issues that, that citizens have had with the city is the lack of maintaining our streets. And so we have made that a key priority.
And the, and the, you know, and again, we're, it, it has been a priority and, and city council has really stepped up and, and worked with staff to try to find those funds so we can move, move forward as we're going on. And of course, the one thing that we do are the, are the grants that we're looking, looking at. You know, we've been, we've been working quite a bit with TechDOT here recently in our, in the, in their safety program, their Road to Zero program and some of that stuff. We're looking at some signalization upgrades. Of course, mostly that's on system with TechDOT. But again, we are responsible here in town for the maintenance of those, of those structures and those lights. And so, but working with them in that project as well from grants. We're also, we've been webinar after webinar after webinar about the infrastructure bill that's come down from the federal government. And so again, we believe the grant, granting opportunities are going to become more viable as we move into the next three, four, five years. And so really kind of working through, working through those and making sure that we do have the matching funds that it's going to take and require to, to get those grants as we move forward. So, but again, it just makes our local dollars go that much further when we can, when we can get that influx of, of federal dollars with it. And, and we talked last year, if y'all will remember last year, when we were at the street strategic planning meeting, we brought, we brought a, an idea to city council for a street use fee. And so as we, as we did that and we looked at the, and we looked at that last year and we talked through it kind of in a very high level to look at the proposed street use fee. You know, council, council gave staff direction to kind of delve into it a little bit further and see what that could look like for the city of San Angelo and, and what that, and what that could possibly be. And so we did that. And so we have, we have, we engaged Kimley Horn, an engineering design firm, or an engineering firm that, that has specialized, well, I don't say specialized, but they have done, done several of these and worked with several other municipalities around to, to establish these street use fees. Here are some of the examples of the others, other cities, somewhat similar in size, some smaller, definitely like Snyder. And then, of course, Corpus Christi and some of those that are much bigger. And, but as we look at them, they're, so there, it's kind of across the board is the, is what the cities are doing and what they're, and how they're starting to engage in these type of street use fees. And the one that we kind of, we looked at fairly closely was Abilene. And, and we brought that to y'all's attention last year. Abilene is the one that is probably the closest to, to not only, you know, and I guess in a physical relationship, but also in size and, and kind of how they're set up and how they work. And so we looked at theirs, we looked at their program that they initiated and, and have visited with them and talked to them about the successes that they are seeing with their program. And basically, they used theirs as a, to get started in the maintenance as to where our city council had, had stepped up several years before that with our maintenance program. And so Abilene is using theirs as a maintenance program, but they've, they have seen that as such a success that they're actually looking to maybe want to expand their program into more of a, to expand it to start addressing rehabilitation and reconstruction of their roadways as well, too, not just maintenance. So as we look at that, you know, we're, we're seeing, we're seeing other communities that are, that have, that have implemented this and are seeing definite benefits across, across their cities as they move forward. You know, and kind of going through it and kind of some of the benefits that we see from city staff as we're looking at it, you know, you know, it continues to, to provide that funding. You know, we're, we're going to get to the end of the bond funding before long and then trying to figure out, you know, what's that next step then? And, and so, and how are we going to continue this program and try to get on the proactive side instead of the reactive side of street construction and street maintenance? And as we look at it, you know, one, you know, one of the things that city council has been adamant on is not increasing property tax. And so we do not want to increase the property tax. And so as well, and, and I mean, that's from, you know, not only. And so as well, and I mean, that's from, you know, not only, you know, when, you know, the economic development guys and Guy and his bunch when they're going out and Michael Looney and his bunch when they're going out and trying to bring businesses in, you know, if businesses are seeing your property taxes increase, 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 you know, they're not going to be enticed or want to come to town. And so again, there's multiple reasons for not increasing the property tax rate to address this as well. And two, and you know, there are concerns about how much debt, you know, we're adding to our books and we don't want to continue to keep adding debt. So this fee would be one way, one possible way not to do that, not to add debt, not to increase your property tax rate. And as you're going through the, you know, and some of the things that we could do with these funding that's possible, you know, kind of how we set up right now, council's kind of said somewhere between four and five million is kind of would be a target for us to look at. And so that's kind of the target that we've worked through and Patrick here in a minute is going to kind of go through the inner workings of how this, how it would work and how it would look. But as we're going through this and we're looking, you know, one of our thoughts is to bring in an in-house mill and overlay crew. If we're going to actually get out, I mean, because we cannot, I don't believe, it's my personal opinion, I do not believe that we could ever borrow enough money to address every street in town. But if we start bringing some of this in-house and we can start directing it in-house, and I believe we can do this, a lot of this work, especially the rehabilitation portion of it, I believe we can do a lot of that in-house at a lower cost and more efficiently. And bringing that in-house will also give us flexibility to go where we need to go, when we need to go versus being tied to a contract. That being said, there are going to be those things that we are not going to be able to do in-house. Reconstruction, full depth reconstruction, the FDR process that we, that we're doing out here on Bell Street, those are things, when roads have failed, we're not going to be able to rehabilitate those. So this money could also be pay as you go capital to contract out some of those services that we're still not going to be on it, or we're not going to be able to do in-house. And then also, when we're looking at it, being able to, one, possibly as we're looking at these granting opportunities, give us a source for match money for these grants. Because a lot of these grants that are going to come out are going to be eighty, twenty matches or seventy, thirty matches. And we are going to have to have dollars here in the city for us to be able to take advantage of those grant dollars. So again, it does that. And then two, with the street use, it is, it's, it's based on trip, it's based on a trip factor and trip generators. And so when you apply it in that manner across the board, it's equitable across all land uses, all business types and all sectors of the community. So when you look at it from that, it's a more equitable way of putting or basically acquiring the funding you need to take care of the degradation of the pavement, you know, based on how much it's, you know, the, how much money you're generating will be based off your trip generation. How many, if you're a business, how many, you know, and Patrick will go through the details here in just a second, just kind of a high level view here. But if your business, you know, typically generates, you know, five thousand trips a day, you're, you know, you're going to be paying more than somebody that, you know, only generates five trips a day. So again, again, it's, it's the, the, the trip generation and the degradation of the payments kind of, it's kind of linear in how it's set up and designed. And so as we move across, we will let Patrick kind of chime in here and start and kind of go through the details of how this program would work.
Let's stop right now and just see if council has any questions that they want to ask at this point in the presentation before Patrick takes over. Oh, please, yeah.
I don't fundamentally disagree with this concept and I don't think anyone else up here does, although I won't speak for them. But I think that the elephant in the room is that the community needs to be, be brought along slowly on any kind of cost increase, especially right on the heels of their tax bills. So I think my concern is one of timing, and I just want to put that out there so that it's part of the conversation. I don't know how we address that, I don't know if it's a town hall, but I think that council needs to hear what the public has to say about this. And of course, we all understand that the amount that will be added potentially to our bills is the cost of a hamburger and a Coke, but there's something about the fact that it's news right now after news that was startling to a lot of people.
Yes, ma'am. And again, this is, we're bringing this just as a proposal and it was, it was something we've been asked to look at over time.
You presented it last year.
Yes, I did.
As part of our strategic planning and it was at that point in time, we said, just continue to pursue it, so, meaning we don't have enough information to start immediately, but continue to pursue it. And the other issue which you can address in a minute and when you get through with this is somehow because it's proposed that it would be on the water bill, everybody thinks it's water increases, just as people look at that water bill and think it's expensive water, but what it is, it's many things on that water bill because it's the water, it's the sewer, it's the trash, and it's stormwater. And so the reason for using the water bill as the means at which to charge folks, if you will, can you explain that and the reason behind that?
Yes, ma'am. We, it'll, well, we can touch on it here in a minute, we have a, it kind of.
Whenever it's appropriate.
Okay. And we can address that, but again, it does, it's, one, the utility bill is already established, it's already an established means by which we send out a bill every month instead of creating, you know, four bills or five bills that we're sending out, we just put all the utilities that we charge on one statement, so it's ease of that. And then also, if, if there, if, if you, if it's not set up correctly, there's no way to, there's no way to, I'm trying to think.
Identify.
No way to collect, to collect on that in such a manner that it's enforceable, basically. And so again, we have to have that set up in the way we do. And again, there, again, there is no specific time or nothing, we're just bringing this forward for council, for council to look at, to give us feedback. Is it good, is it bad? I mean, do you, do you not like how it's set up or the way it's set up? And so again, we're just trying to garner feedback right now, not necessarily try to, you know.
And we're not taking a vote today.
That's correct.
This is a presentation only, an opportunity to learn more, to ask the questions, so that you can answer your constituents' issues or challenges or explain it better. So use this as a learning situation for all of us.
And we, and again, we'll kind of go through some more things. And we definitely do need council's feedback on some of these items as well, too, because again, we're still, we're not, we're not at the, we're not at the final stages of this, we're still, we're still kind of mid-level, working through the details. And so again, we need to get council feedback and work our way through.
Harry, do you have a question or comment?
I just have a comment. And that is, I think the proposed direction that we're going with this, if we decide to do this, has a lot of benefits. First of all, we can, we can put some city employees back on the roads, doing what, streets, doing what we, what I think we can do from a maintenance standpoint and small reconstruction that will save the taxpayers' dollars in the long run. And so from my perspective, this investment, I think, will pay benefits. So I think the concept, whether we stay with six seventy-five or some of those other numbers is, is not anything I'm worried about discussing today. But I think the concept will ultimately save taxpayer dollars, and so I think it's a good concept.
Lucy?
I just have a quick question. Shane, how did you come up with six seventy-five?
We based a lot of what we did off of other cities' numbers that we were, that not only we looked at, but also our consultant looked at. And so these numbers are based a lot on what other cities are doing. So, and again, some of them are tweaked a little bit, some of our numbers are tweaked a little bit to kind of work for the city and kind of what council's target number was for us to look at. And so some of those numbers are tweaked, but again, we based a lot of this stuff on what other cities have already done and established.
Shane said Abilene was already doing this.
Correct. And that, all those listed cities I had up on the screen, yes, are currently in the program.
My question is, and how, how much money are they bringing in? Say, for instance, just Abilene, per year?
I believe it, I believe it was.
Ever long they've been doing it?
I think their dollar amount per person is larger than this proposal, but I think six to seven million.
Abilene's bringing in right at five million, just over five million on their, with their fee. And again, theirs is for maintenance activities, so their chip seal and stuff like that, so that's what they're bringing in.
And again, as we kind of go through the workings of kind of how we have it laid out and based on, based on input from our consultant that we worked with, and again, based on what, again, what we saw in other cities, because Abilene, I believe, is six seventy-five, is that where, Abilene?
Six seventy-five is exactly where they're at.
And so that's exactly where they're at in other cities. And every city has their own nuances to their program. And so you kind of, you kind of define your program based on the needs of your city and how their city councils wanted it set up, so.
They instituted it about three years ago and they've gone back and they're updating it and going back for, I think, larger dollars and more comprehensive thing. So they're on their second round of implementing a change to it, something like that.
Yep, they're, they're, they're starting to look, again, as I mentioned earlier, they, they've had, or they feel they've had such success that with this program, that they want to actually expand the program that they have into rehabilitation and reconstruction program as well, a lot like what we were starting to do with our bond funding. And so, and again, but I think as we start looking at some of these, like Harry stated just a minute ago, you know, bringing some of these, these things back in-house and doing some of those maintenance activities that we can do in-house, you know, just looking at what four to five million dollars a year could do, somewhere in that range, I think of it, you know, I think of it in individual streets and not everybody may be familiar with the street, but if you look at, look at Avenue L or Avenue J, one of those type of streets and that act as a minor collector in the Santa Rita neighborhood, if you look at something like that, you know, if we do, brought an in-house crew kind of with those kind of funds available, you know, we could probably see doing an entire street section like that four or five times over in a year. So you're starting to see some of those minor collectors in some of those smaller roads within our, within our neighborhoods that handle a lot of daily traffic to where we can improve those, we could do improvements in-house. And again, we could do a lot more. And again, the flexibility of it is what I think is so key to that, so.
I think the toughest not to crack, to crack on this is equitability. And I see you're taking some information from Abilene on how you divide up this pie so that the public feels as though it's done fairly across the board. I'd suspect that the next meeting we have and people are talking about that in public, that's where we're going to get some important inputs about how they think this ought to be handled in terms of who's paying what.
Yes, sir. And Patrick's fixing to get into that, so, and kind of show and break down how all that works. And so I'll let Patrick take it away.
Right, so after our strategic planning workshop last year, we did engage with Kimley Horn, like Shane was talking about, and started to develop a fee structure that was something that forced in Angelo and how our uniqueness. So what they developed was a structure that basically had two categories, you had a residential category and you had a non-residential category. So on your screen there, you're looking at the residential side of the, of the pie here. So for a single-family residential, which is a typical home, you'd be looking at a, at a flat rate of six dollars and seventy-five cents per month. On the other side, there's multifamily as part of that residential. And so you're talking about apartment complexes, townhomes, duplexes in that category. And what the consultants proposed was six dollars per dwelling unit on that. So if an apartment complex has a hundred apartments, it'd be six times a hundred per month for that particular apartment complex. So that's the residential side. So the residential side is very, very clear, easy and easy to understand. For non-residential, what we didn't want to do is just propose a flat fixed rate for, like we did on residential properties, because the sheer range of different properties and commercial entities in San Angelo just warranted a range of categories and fee structures as well on that. So along with that, there's a calculation that we used in order to determine exactly what fee a particular entity would be charged. So based, starting with that, we, we reached back to a nationally published manual, the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual. That's a big name and it's a big book. So basically what that book does is it goes in and it categorizes every type of business in the United States. And for each of that type of business, they generally tag a number in there for the amount of trips that that particular business type would generate. And so as, the easy way to understand this is to walk through an example with you. And so that's kind of what we have on our screen. So let me kind of talk you through how that, that equation plays out. So if you look at a particular entity and, and we start with the business classification, so in this case, we're looking at like a restaurant, a gym, a salon, something like that. So you see there's a gym up there and that is then classified into a land use category that is stemmed from that IT, that ITE manual. The land use category, again, goes, takes it from a gym to a health or fitness club. From there, that land use category within that same manual, you have a development unit. So for each land use category, there's, there's a multiplier or development unit in there. So whether that's square footage, whether that's number of acres, whether that's number of fueling items, whatever that particular business classification is in its, in its niche, that has a particular development unit. So in the case of a gym, it's based on per square feet. So per thousand square feet, you have a trip factor. And so that's the number of trips that's generated per thousand square feet for that particular gym. So if you do the math kind of there, for example, three thousand square foot gym, classified as an athletic club, three thousand divided by the thousand, thousand per square feet gives you three, times the trip factor of four point five two, gives you a multiple, a sum of thirteen point five six. So then you move over into that fee schedule over there and there's a, there's a range there between the ten and fifteen that that thirteen point five six falls within, classified as a C three, which ultimately is forty-five dollars there. Now there's a table all the way to the right there that kind of, that we use, that the consultants came up with as a way to expand that into the larger entities. So you're really talking about your higher use category. So if we didn't have the multiplier, you're looking at a seventy-five dollar max fee as proposed right now. But what that multiplier does is you take it and anything between, as it's shown on the screen there, zero and three, or zero and three hundred would be multiplied by one, between three hundred and six hundred would be multiplied by two. So seventy-five dollars, one hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and twenty-five dollars is kind of how that plays out. Based on what the consultants came up with, when they looked at San Angelo, they took the tens of thousands of different business types that are in this manual and they pared down, that down to forty-six land use categories that basically encompass almost every business entity in San Angelo. So every non-residential entity would be classified underneath one of these forty-six land use categories that the, that the consultants proposed. Moving on to that, these are the rates that, that were proposed initially by them. What you see there is, you see your, you have your residential at six, six point seven five and six, they're at the bottom. And then in the non-residential categories, there's basically six tiers there ranging from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars, that multiplier table off to the right. And ultimately, there's an annual revenue generation under these proposed rates of about four and a half million dollars. If you look at the residential generation, obviously, it, it would be interesting to know what kind of the numbers are behind it. So if you look for each one of those tiers and each one of those categories, the number of customers, the proposed rate there, kind of what a monthly and an annual revenue would be for each tier. And then we, we as staff wanted to kind of give council an insight into if we wanted to discuss, or if they wanted to look at adjusting those rates in some manner, kind of what a dollar would do on the residential side and what five dollars would do on the non-residential side, whether that's increasing by a dollar or decreasing a dollar, that would be a plus or minus both monthly and annually there in that far right column. There were three entities that the consultants carved out as far as land, large land use categories, based on San Angelo specifically, the airport, Goodfellow Air Force Base, and the San Angelo Stock Show and Rodeo Association. So based on a calculation and a methodology that they had come up with for those three entities. that they had come up with for those three entities, those would be billed on an annual basis at thirty-five hundred dollars per month, three thousand and a thousand fifty, respectively, as proposed.
Talk about those because of the large landmass that they are. My, if you'll go back to that, the question mark is, okay, so how would that compare to, for example, the school, SISD, as well as Angelo State University, because they too would be considered large?
Yes, ma'am.
Land.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we have a slide further on where we're, we'll visit with, with y'all to try to get some feedback from y'all on those. Because the schools, they look at the schools a little differently. And so most, well, almost all of them have, charge like a per student, on a per student basis. And so again, we will look at that in a few more slides.
Sorry. The reason some of that would become an issue is because if you take a look at elementary school and middle schools, they don't drive, those students.
No, ma'am, but their parents do.
Their parents do. But, so that's the reason I asked, too, is if you start taking and breaking it down into thought processes, those would be some of the things that you would ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Or think about.
And again, that's why we, we're looking this as not necessarily individuals, but looking at it as, based on trip generation. And that's the key to this, is the trip generation. And, and what does that entity, or what does that school, or, or whatever it is, what, what do they, how many, what does their trip generation look like? And so, again, that's, that's how we're basing this on. And so, because whether it's an elementary school or a junior high, even though those children aren't driving, if, if y'all've been around one of the schools at drop-off time or pickup time, it's, it's amazing how, how many vehicles are out there to pick up the kids. And so, and of course, and then the bus is also traveling on the roads as well, too, again, generating that degradation of the pavement, so. And so some of the other components that we looked at in this, and of course, we want council's feedback on this, are, are some of these things, you know. And, and just to kind of let you know, we are going to create a grievance process for this, not necessarily the, about what it is or how much it is, that's a council decision. But again, when we look at, as from staff and/or our consultants, we do not necessarily know, just going to, Mayor, we don't know what Brenda Gunter, Inc. is. And so it's not descriptive. And so we don't necessarily know what land use category to put that in. And so we are going to have those, where we're going to have people come say, hey, I'm not in this group, I need to be in this group. And so a lot of those, and so that's what the grievance process is for, is so they can come tell us that, hey, I, I don't belong down here in this one, I belong up here in this one. And so we'll do that. And of course, most of these, it will be resolved at the department review level. And so, but if it, if it escalates above that, we, we are going to have the city auditor review it and provide feedback and, and guidance there. And if that is still unsatisfactory to, to the, to the citizen or the business, then we would have the city manager as the final, final process in the review of that. And so to, to do it. Again, we believe that, we believe that almost all if, I, I can't, I can't see that, you know, once we, once we get to know what the business is and how it acts and what it looks like, and base, base it on that information that we receive. I don't know why it would ever have to escalate beyond the department review. But again, just in case it does, there is a process in place. Also want to really emphasize this, is that this, these monies would be in a separate fund, and they would be restricted to basically the rehabilitation, reconstruction and maintenance of roadway elements. And those elements are, you know, the road base, the road itself, curb and gutter, sidewalks, traffic signals, pedestrian elements, all of those things would, would, and that's all that these funds could be used for. They couldn't be used in water, they can't be used in general services, they can't be used anything but on the streets themselves. And so.
Which, the other issue that I think we should emphasize here is that, that would also not change, and we wouldn't eliminate the dollars that's in operations or the funds that we already put into street construction. As we said, seal coatings, three point five million, five hundred thousand for potholes, et cetera. So we're saying that we would continue funding those as they're funding. So let's say we would put four hun, four million dollars into the budget for, like we have been doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Right?
Correct.
So we're not taking that away. What we're doing is adding
This would be in addition to.
In addition to it, so that we could do it faster, quicker, more efficiently and less costly.
Correct. And, and we would, and we would not mingle these, these funds, these dedicated funds, we would not mingle these with our traditional operation and maintenance funds. They would still remain separate. And so the accounting and the, the accountability would be there that we are using these funds where they're supposed to be used, which is on the streets. And so I want to, you know, wanted to make sure that everybody understands that, that, that there will be no co-mingling of, of, of this fund with any of the other ones as well, too. So, and then again, as we visited about earlier, assigning it to the existing utility bill, again, to, to help with that enforcement and the collection of, of the bill, again, it gives, it gives the city ability to, to actually collect and also work through our collection system that we have with the utility statement. Some of the things, as we, that we need to consider as we're looking at this, is as we look into the future, we all know, you know, that everything, the cost of doing business goes up yearly. And here lately, it's been going up exponentially. Our dollars don't go as far as they used to. So at some time in the future, i- if y'all decide to implement a program like this, one of the things we would know is kind of what would you want to look at from an escalation period? Would we want to, you know, staff would recommend doing it on a percentage basis, and whether we base that on some consumer pricing index, a, a municipal price index or cost index, something or one that's related to actual road maintenance itself, one of the indices that are out there with a percentage cap on top of that. Would we want to look at something like that? Would we just want a fixed annual rate at some, whatever that is, at two and a half, three percent, whatever it is, kind of what we would consider a general inflation rate? And then also, you know, would you want to start that type of rate escalation, year two, year three, year four, year five? How far out would you want to take the program before we actually started looking at increasing this fee to accommodate for, for that, for the, basically the inflation that, that we know we're going to see over time? So that's something to consider as we're looking into this and, and, and hope to get feedback at some point. Another thing that staff would recommend is also for low, low income accommodation, is to utilize what we're using in, with our water utility currently, is, is adding funding into the low, low income assistance program through the Concho Valley Action Agency. And that way, if people are having problems paying their bills or, or covering their bills or the cost of this, is that they can seek assistance that, that, from this agency that, that works with, with low income people on, on a regular basis to help them pay their bills. And so we would recommend that as well. Again, would like y'all's feedback on that as well, too. One of the things that we, that we wanted to bring to your attention is the apartments. When you look at, when you look at this, when you look at apartments, when you have a hundred units or two hundred units or two hundred and fifty units, times six dollars, that's, that starts becoming very burdensome upfront. And, you know, a lot of those apartments and people like that, you know, they're in, you know, they're in six-month or year-long contracts, and so they're locked in. And so for them to absorb that cost all at once would, would be considerable. And, and so we want to make sure that, you know, but we would, as staff, recommend a phased approach to where maybe we do fifty percent year one and then a hundred percent year two, to allow them to build into their contracts as those contracts come up for renewal, to help cover those costs on the apartments as well, too. And then finally, we start talking about schools. And again, we look at schools, SISD, T L C, Cornerstone, SU, Howard, et cetera, all of the schools. When we look at that, most every, most everyone else is, is charging a per student basis instead of a, a flat per campus or whatever, because every, everything and everybody varies. And so by size. And so they, they've looked at a per student basis. And so when we looked at this, kind of to give y'all, basically let y'all look at this and kind of give us direction as to what y'all feel is appropriate for schools, we looked at anywhere from sixty cents per student to a dollar fifteen per student, and you can kind of see what the annual generation, revenue generation would be for, for that. And this is based on San Angelo ISD's enrollment numbers this last year. So that's kind of what, for San Angelo ISD, that's kind of what this would look at. And, and when we look at that, you know, these type of dollars, those are pretty significant for somebody to immediately absorb into a budget. And so we would also recommend a phased approach for our schools out there as well, too. You know, fifty percent year one, a hundred percent year two. If council has other ideas, we would love to hear those as well, too. But again, to allow these schools and, and people time to build this fee into their budgets. Because again, it's, that's a pretty substantial dollar figure just to all of a sudden be plugging into a budget one day, especially if they're on a different fiscal timeframe than we are as well. And with that, I think that kind of wraps up the, the funding and the, and the fee proposal. So again, we would love, love y'all's feedback and any questions, comments, and.
I'll start with Larry. Do you have questions or comments for them?
Are there any entities that are exempt from this?
As it currently stands, Larry, no, we're not proposing any entities that are exempt per se. But again, that's at council's discretion and, and consideration. So we would look for that feedback from council. But these numbers are taking into account all residential and non, non-residential entities currently.
That inclu, that includes the city. I mean,
Right.
The city departments or city entities, we would all, within our different funds, would, would also contribute to this as well, too. Because we are trip generators as well.
Karen? The implication is that this does not require voter approval. Can you speak to that, please?
No, ma'am, this does not require voter, voter approval. This can be, this can be adopted as an ordinance by city council.
Lucy?
I just have a quick question on this property tax that we had gotten approved.
Talk into your mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, this property tax rate that we had approved, that point zero zero six for the street fund, is that going to be combined with this rate that we have? So it's all going to go in one, one pot?
Yes, ma'am. That dedicated source, since it, since it was dedicated by council to specifically only be used on streets, that could actually be, I mean, we, we, you would see it in the revenue as two different light items, but we would keep that in the same fund, since it is a dedicated funding source for streets only.
Thank you. Harry?
I like the part where you talked about being a dedicated fund that could only be used for street, because I've heard a lot of citizens in the last couple of weeks think that we're just taking money and it can be used for whatever. So when we, if we make this decision and it's passed as an ordinance, that part I hope will be in there that we can say, hey, it goes into a separate fund that can only be used for road maintenance and road construction.
Yes, sir. And, and I know Teresa has been looking at this some as well, too, and unfortunately, she's not here today. But I believe there's state law that also has it restricted as well, too. So it wouldn't only just be in our ordinance, but I believe for us to be able to pass an ordinance to, to collect a fee such as this and name it a street use fee, that there's state law that restricts the use of those funds as well, too.
Thank you.
Tom?
So Harry touched on that, and I think we'll roll this one over to Brandon. Brandon, there's a couple of people here that brought up the fact that they thought there might be some legal issue of putting a fee on our water bill. Can you expand upon that? I know we've kind of given you a little foreshadow that question.
Yeah, so the way that the, both the administrative code and the water code define a water and sewer utility, it has a whole laundry list of entities that are encompassed in that, but it actually excludes municipal corporations. So I believe it could be on the, the water bill. But the other point about the, the co-mingling the funds, we want to ensure that it's not a revenue generator that exceeds the cost of the program or providing those services. Otherwise, it could be an unauthorized tax. So so long as we, if there's a reasonable basis for the fee, then, then we're good there.
And my summary on this, just, you know, we're all throwing out opinions on this. I love the fact that nobody escapes this. All right? Everybody pays, everybody shares, and there's no way around it. And I think if all of our tax structures were based like this, we would never be in this type of situation. And so I'll be the first one to say, I like the way this thing's going. I don't think it's a burden, but I do like the fact that you have already established a process if there's a grievance in here to pursue. But I'm certainly open to anything further, and I'm very encouraged by the process.
Tommy?
I, I'm going to echo what Karen said much earlier in the conversation. I do like the concept. The, the timing is of question to me because of everything that's going on. I don't know how we deal with that, other than say, we're going to bring this back in six months, a year, whatever. I don't know what that is. But the timing, at least for me, there's, it just doesn't feel good, doesn't feel right to me. And I want to chase a rabbit just a minute. And this is going to be a real chasing a rabbit. Shane mentioned signals, and there has been an issue that has arisen, and I'm not going to go down this path because I think it would be far more appropriate at the discussion of the CIP. But there has been a, a, a signal that has been mentioned to be removed, that I think we need to discuss that. But you mentioned signals, so I wanted to throw that out. I'm, I'm thinking the more appropriate time to talk about that is when we talk about the CIP later in June.
No, I tell you what we need to do, and we'll talk about that in a minute with Shane, not right now, I think, Tommy, because I think the idea was that it was announced that that traffic signal was going to be pulled today, that temporary light was going to be pulled today. So I think the issue is we need to talk to Shane outside this meeting today and say, there's too many people who are opposed to that temporary light being moved from Knickerbocker and Twin Mountain. And we need to leave it there. And then, then at some point, go ahead and get that put into the CIP, but we need to address the issue of not pulling it right now.
Well, I think it's, the, the, the signal is in the CIP, we just need to find, instruct the staff to find the funding. So again, that's another, another day, another discussion. But when you said signals a minute ago, it triggered my, triggered my thought process, so.
If they're out there moving it now, stop them.
They're not, they're not moving it. They're, they just bagged the, bagged the heads. There, there's a process for moving even temporary signals. And so we were, we just started that process. The trailers are still there, so.
There's a lot of opposition to it. We'd like to see it stay there for a while. And we'll deal with the CIP later. Yeah, okay. Separate from this.
Separate from this, yes.
Yeah, I, I think that there might be some people in the audience today who wanted to add comment on this issue. If you are here for that purpose, please come forward, state your name, your district, city council member in your district, and offer your comments if you are here. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Thanks for hanging with us, Allison.
Good evening. We're going to talk through mainly water supplies.
Is it evening already?
Yes, it is. I don't know what time it is, but it definitely is evening. My presentation is mainly about water supplies and waste wa, larger wastewater projects. We've already kind of touched on the water and sewer line replacement projects. Those are College Hills, A and M, MLK and Randolph that Shane went over. So it's not really about the distribution replacement projects, but more about supply in general. So as of May first, we are sitting at fifty-eight months of water supply. This year has been very sad, depressing, whatever you would like to say, as far as rainfall goes. And I think the consensus.
You mean there's been no flooding?
No, no drainage, which. No. No drainage, which I know Shane is not a fan of, but I definitely am. And so we haven't seen that runoff. But these calculations do assume a zero inflow scenario. So whatever those lakes are as of May 1st, we assume no additional inflow will come into those reservoirs. How they evaporate over the course of time, CRWD provides OHIV's numbers. And so then we use those calculations to see kind of how those reservoirs project. And we only factor in, so this does include Hickory, but only about a million and a half gallons a day. Obviously, we can turn on that system to the eight million gallons a day right now, soon to be 12. But this is a worst-case scenario. So sitting at 58 months of water supply as of May 1st. I like to show this just as our trend. So last year, when I was presenting this, it was very much an increasing trend. We are seeing 2021 drop back down into 12 and a half million gallons per day. This is an annual average. So in the winter, sometimes we send out nine, 10 million gallon days, depending on the weather. But in the summer, we can hit 22, 25 million gallons, and that is mainly off irrigation And then how our usage stacks up. So we are primarily residential consumers. So we do not have a, we do have large commercial customers, but we don't have them as a whole across the city. 71% of our water usage does go to residential, and then you can see the breakdown between commercial, institutional, and industrial. We have a very small industrial demand. So we have talked about the Hickory project, and it's been discussed at several council meetings going into this year. These are, these top two pitchers are pitchers taken last week. So you can see the drill rig is up, mobilized, and it is actively drilling the first well of five for this expansion project. The pitcher on the left is the right away clearing, so those will be our roads and pipelines leading to the well sites. And then the bottom pitcher is one of the pitchers from several years ago when we were marketing the ranch, but it is the main drive into our well field from the head gate. This is the project that will take the Hickory to the full permitted allocation of 12 million gallons per day. Hydro Resources and PLW are the contractors on those projects. And we are working through the additional funding, but a total of $62 million to take this project from the eight million gallons to 12 and to do the two new clear wells. Sixty-two million.
Allison, you've talked about the clear wells a couple of times. Why don't you just, for the benefit of the public, define what a clear well is and what it does?
Okay. A clear well is the final holding area, or the holding storage tank, so to speak, before the pump station, which what we call our high-service pump station. It's the pump station that sends out water to the extents of the city and throughout all parts of distribution. So whether that water is coming from OHIV or the Hickory, it goes into a very large tank, a five million gallon reservoir, which is the clear well, where it undergoes that contact time with chlorine and all the other makeups to basically allow it to meet the regulatory requirements to be pumped and sent out to the distribution system.
They are very, 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 very critical to our water supply.
Yes. And currently, we have one large clear well. And so we can only do maintenance on that clear well in the winter months. So we do not have flexibility from right now until probably mid-September to do any sort of maintenance on that clear well, just due to our demands and how fast water is having to be pushed out to the distribution system.
Hence, it's extremely important that we spend this money on the clear wells.
So the clear wells that we're doing for the future are two, two million gallon clear wells. So we can operate one while we do maintenance on the other, and it allows a little bit more flexibility going forward with treatment options.
Thanks for the info.
The next large water supply project that we are actively working on is the Contra River Water Supply Project. This one was adopted several years ago. Our permits, there's two necessary permits that we need with the state of Texas, DCEQ, to be able to move forward with this project. One is a discharge permit, and the green star you see on the map is our wastewater treatment plant. We've applied for a permit and received admin completion, but it would discharge at the end of that black line that you see. It would travel seven to eight river miles following the green path, where the city owns an additional property where the orange star is, where we would take it out and pipe it back to the water treatment plant in the yellow star. Our water treatment plant is a part of the CIP that you saw earlier. You saw, you know, 60-plus, I don't quite remember the millions of dollars tied to it, but the upgrade to that facility to where we could treat by microfiltration and other more modern technologies today versus our conventional surface water treatment plant. So it would produce a better water quality. But the other permit is for the water to be able to follow that green path and for the city to maintain ownership from where we put it in to where we take it out. Today, if we were to discharge it, it'd become Waters of the U.S., and therefore, we have no ownership further downstream. Both of those permits or our applications are admin complete, and so just working through the regulatory process. And that can take some time, but we are actively working through So how all these projects stack up is for the next 50 years, the blue graph or the blue bar that you see is the full allocation of Hickory. The red is the reliable, safe yield from OHIV. And so during the drought of record, this is what we can rely on IV from. The little green line that you can see in between red and orange is what we can safely rely ultimately from South Contra River, but it's the South Contra River system between Twin Buttes, Nazworthy, and the river itself from Nazworthy to where our treatment plant is. So it's a very small, reliable yield because Twin Buttes has ultimately gone functionally dry to where we can't get water from Twin Buttes into Nazworthy. And then finally, the orange bar that you see would be once we get the Contra River Water Supply Project online, and how that stacks up with projections and demands as we move through the out year. So it is very critical that we move forward with the Contra River Water Supply.
We don't have a timeframe on those permits being-
No, ma'am. The state doesn't, they don't give you an exact timeline. And then finally, for the last water supply project that we are still actively working on is the partnership. So we do have the long-term water agreement with Fort Stockton Holdings between the City of Midland, Abilene, and ourselves. And then you see the breakdown between each city and how those water supply contract is being allocated. Switching now from water supply to the Lake Nazworthy Sewer Project. So this is to ultimately increase the capacity at the airport in the Lake Nazworthy area, take lift stations offline, so that we can continue to develop and expand in that area. The Texas Historical Commission has approved the alignment, so we have passed that regulatory step, so to speak. And this is the path from the Lake Nazworthy, or I can show it on the next slide. So the blue line you see, this portion, is what we do have THC approval on. We are still working through some other legal issues in this area due to private property issues. But for the backbone and the important, critical component and path to getting from the airport in Lake Nazworthy area to Chadburn Street has been approved by the Historical Commission. Let me go back. So we are in final design right now, and the final design is due November 10th. And so that is when we will have final design plans. And then we would start putting that out for bid either at the end of the year, the first part of 2023, to begin the construction of that pipeline. So we are looking within the next year or so to begin construction on that project.
When would it officially be available for use?
That would depend, it is probably a two-year construction window, at least.
Nothing would be online before then?
No, ma'am. No. There could be parts downstream closer to Chadburn, which isn't where our needs are. Our needs are at the furthest extent of this line, which is the airport in Lake Nazworthy area. But ultimately, you have to have the full system in place. So it isn't like our need is halfway in the middle of that project. It's at the very end. So we do have to complete-
We can start to identify a timeline, and that's key.
Yes. Once we can ultimately get it out for construction, now we are seeing supply chain issues with PVC pipe and pumps and motors. And it's the world we live in today. But we could see some delays there. But ultimately, once we get a contractor on board, I think we're making the next big step to hopefully lining out that timeline to a more definitive timeframe for everybody to be aware of.
Questions for Allison at this point, or comments for her? No, continue.
The last one I have is just an update. The last time I spoke to y'all a year ago about the customer service inspectors, I was requesting additional personnel. And so we've now been a year since that last meeting, since that request, and wanted to give y'all an update of kind of how that has progressed. We were able to hire three additional employees. We already had reallocated one employee to be a dedicated CSI and be the administrator of this program and to kind of lead this effort. So I can say, as of April 30th, we have four licensed customer service inspectors, and that is a TCEQ license. And so one of them does hold a BPAT, so he could test a backflow device if he needed to. But this is kind of the breakdown of the initial inspections they have completed. Ultimately, there's 474 initial inspections in these categories that you see. They have been focusing on commercial industries. We do have to go to residential every once in a while when there is a water well issue or something that we need to go make sure that the city's system is protected from their alternative water source. But ultimately, we are making progress here. They have done a presentation at the San Angelo Apartment Association, because as you can see, they went to 110 apartments. And so a lot of those apartment complexes have, some owners own multiple apartment complexes. And so kind of educating the Apartment Association of what we're doing, why we're doing it, things that they're looking for. And it was very, from the feedback I received, it was well-received, and it kind of gave everybody an idea of what was going on. Almost, I think about 90% of these facilities will have to have a reinspection because there was a deficiency of some sort, whether it's a hose bib vacuum breaker or a TMP drain line on a hot water heater that wasn't air-gapped enough. Those type of things, or their fill on their pool was not air-gapped. Just different things. They will have to go back for another inspection. So it is not a one inspection and done. It does sometimes take multiple trips to getting these businesses to full compliance. But so far, it's been very well-received. And this was just to kind of provide y'all an update with the personnel y'all allocated last year to this program. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
I didn't see restaurants on that list. And since they've been to my place of business, I know that they are doing them.
So these are the ones that they've kind of highlighted, like an industry that they're trying to wholly get, so to speak. But I can, we can look at, we haven't tackled restaurants in an entirety.
Has mine been hit?
I'll ask them about that. This is just the list that they gave me.
You'll see, yeah.
See, where's Brenda's?
Let's go get her.
And so is my office building.
Allison, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, Tommy?
May we take a quick break?
We can take a break, but why don't we have dinner while we're doing it? So 30 minutes? 30 minutes. Okay, so it's 6:15. We'll be back at 6:45.
Tommy remembers what time.
Tommy remembers what time.
All right, it is 6:50. And so we will call this meeting back to order. And who's on next? It looks like Guy must be, because he's sitting there. Come on, you're on.
I am. So I know that you'd be highly disappointed if I didn't start off with planes, trains, and automobiles. Whoop, there it is. So that's what we're going to be talking about, which are our economic development priorities. On the plane side, we've had some ramp improvements that have been ongoing with the Customs and Border Patrol, some facility improvements, and those are bringing in high-paying jobs into our area. Airport gateway signage, great project. First of all, we cleared the brush, installed signage at Al Torres Design out there, reduced the blight as you go outside the airport. Great idea that you're not just running into a wall of trees and brush, but that there's a cleared area, so it's visually appealing. And since the airport is our key economic development driver, we want to make the airport look the best that it can. We have a project ongoing, Project Skyline, and we're doing a public-private partnership to restore the GTE hangar, improve the commercial apron along there, be constructing the new FBO terminal, adding new parking facilities for general-use parking and rental car parking. San Angel Railport's one of our huge projects, another public-private partnership. Construction's ongoing. It's underway out there. There is electricity out there now. We're working on gas and water for those facilities. It's an ongoing marketing effort with our partners, The Chamber, and also with South Plains Lamesa Railroad, marketing that. And this will be a key driver for our economy, both now and in the future.
Can we go back to the planes part first, Guy?
Certainly. Ran too fast for that one.
One of the biggest questions that we all hear from constituents and people that are passionate about the airport is, what about airport hangars? What about airport hangars? Can we construct them? Can we, what's going on with the airport hangars? So could Jeremy come forward while we're on this subject and talk about airport hangars?
Absolutely.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so as you know, in my CIP, I'm going to come to you with that south taxi lane improvement. It's going to be 90% funded by the FAA under the infrastructure grant. That's going to open up room for four additional 90-by-90s and four additional 100-by-100 hangars. We're working right now with the FAA through the reimbursable agreement, because there is a main transmission line that runs through there. That could take up to six months for us just to get the agreement, the paperwork in place to start construction.
Otherwise, what would be your approximate time period to start?
If the FAA wasn't in the way?
Well, they are, so I can't, you know, I can't get around that. But what do we tell people? I want to build a hangar out there. What do I do?
We were hoping to get the grant by the end of July, so we could start lease the flat work there. I do have about three or four spots where somebody could come lease land now and build a 90-by-90 or 100-by-100. I don't have any tee hangars available. I got an 18-person waiting list on all my tee hangars. Executive hangars have been full forever. We just don't have the hangar availability.
Okay, so go ahead, Tom. You were going to say something.
And me and Jeremy, we've had these conversations. Is there somewhere we could start some more hangars? I mean, could we build some shade hangars? I guess there's, to me, when I go out there, it looks like there's lots of property. The point of it is, you're the airport guy, I'm not. And I have to realize, I got to stay in my lane. But I look and I might go, if we could put shade hangars or tee hangars here in this spot, I mean, you've got a project and a plan and an approval. Is there things we could do to help you facilitate that?
Yeah, and I think we're doing that with the south taxi lane construction. The problem right now is there is land. There's lots of land out there. The whole east side of the airport can be developed, but you have to have infrastructure to the runways. You've got to have a way to get there, and that's multi-million dollars worth of infrastructure. So if somebody wanted land now to build a hangar, and they want to be somewhere close to the ramps now, so that south taxi lane, it's about a $4 million investment. We pay 10% of that cost, the FAA pays the rest, but that will open up the whole south side of that taxi lane for tee hangars, covered tie-downs, and that type of stuff. But if you wanted to build a tee hangar today, I just don't have the, I don't have the infrastructure to the ramp.
So can the infrastructure, as far as you're talking electricity?
No, taxi lane, taxiway access.
Okay, so you're just worried about the taxiway?
Yep.
Well, because if you built, let's say, tee hangars outside the fence, they still got to get in through the fence to the runway, and I mean, it, yeah.
Well, I'm with you on that, but I was wondering, if you had a timeline on that, you can't build tee hangars overnight. So I mean, if there's a year, and you know it's coming, you could at least start this. But I guess, as you say, dealing with FAA, sometimes that window's nothing we can gamble on.
Yeah, and we're not waiting, especially with the executive hangars. When I build them, when we build this taxi lane, I've already have four of those eight already spoken for. They want to pull a land lease and build. Most of them want to build 90-by-90s. But the mayor's wisdom, she said, let's extend the taxi lane all the way to the fence, so we can open up all that area for larger hangars, bigger businesses. And we're also decommissioning runway 927 next year with the next FAA money, and then that will open to the whole industrial park. All the area between the Border Patrol hangar and the new Skyline hangar will be open for development.
So my final question is on hangars. Are all the rented hangars have functional planes in them that are used? Or, and do we have a minimum? I mean, somebody can't buy it just to store a plane forever. Is there a timeline that they have to have out and use their plane, so it just doesn't become a storage unit?
We don't have that in our rules and regulations. All we say is it has to be airworthy. An airworthiness certificate's usually about four years when you have to register and keep it flying. So when we do our inspections, all we do is make sure that it's insured and that it's airworthy. But we don't have a requirement on how often they fly. Of course, we'd like to do that. We could consider that, as we write minimum regulations and standards.
Well, no, I'm, I just go here. I would hate to see something like that. I mean, you know, there's 18 people deep. I'm the worst person at having a storage unit or something that I've never been to the back of, all right? And I don't want our hangars to be used that way.
Right, and we, so we have to stick to the FAA's hangar use policy. We have to inspect those hangars and make sure that they are being used for aviation use. Those hangars are also coded through the fire department, excuse me, for aircraft Same thing with even someone who was storing model airplanes in the back of their hangar. That's a violation of the lease because all you can store is that aircraft with the tail number registered to that hangar. And there was, there was one recently that was not in compliance, but all the other T-hanger everyone else is in. We're in full compliance now.
I was just looking at a way to make more hangar space.
It's just, it's a weight, there's plenty of space. We just got to get that stuff done.
Hurry up.
We're pushing, hurry up as fast as we can.
Now, is there money? Wait a minute, I can't pass this up.
Okay.
Is there any money for an escalator, a functional escalator out there?
No.
I get it. It's, I got my ding in, go ahead, I'm done.
It's the park.
That's the only reason he called you up.
That's it, that's it. Because when I fly out, the up one's not working, and when I come back, the back one's not working.
We know when you're flying out, we know how to shut it off.
He's here, we'll throw the switch. It's looking good. You've got lots of people coming in and out of there. The concessions are being handled, it's nice.
What's our in-plane, in planes and the planes looking like?
We're almost back to industry standard, and that's nationwide. San Angelo's done very well, even with the cost of plane tickets as high as they are right now, we're still looking at 90% load factors.
Other questions for Jeremy? Will we have him up here? I don't see any. Okay, thank you.
You totally ruined my three-minute presentation.
You can make it up.
But it was, it was good stuff. We're always glad to come along where we can and help the airport advance to become the world-class facility it can be.
You can move on to rail now.
Do you want me to slow down?
I'll stop you appropriate next time instead of...
Okay, so I think that rail is our future. In San Angelo, we've got lots of prospects that are lining up for that. When the border crossings open at Presidio, I think it's going to really change our economy. It will become a major distribution center.
Don't you think we will become that before the rail crossing? Because I think that there are other companies looking at it right now that are not necessarily looking at the Presidio.
Within interstate as well, we could see some progress in that regard in developing warehousing space and that sort of thing. I think it will really kick off, though, internationally, especially Chihuahua and Sinaloa, Durango, and some of those northern countries or parts of Mexico are just chomping at the bit to get a shorter route for distribution and to not go through the overcrowded port of Laredo as we saw a couple of weeks ago.
Any questions about the rail port? Okay.
Interstate 27 designation, it has been federally designated. And now, the importance of having both I-14 and I-27 designated is that actually, construction begins almost immediately because as they're making improvements to that designated route right now, that can be done at interstate standards, make them four-lane and that sort of thing. So we talked about before, the statement was made, you're 20 years off, maybe for a full-blown interstate, but you'll see sections of those interstates developing all along. Fact is, I-27 already exists and has for a number of years between Lubbock and Amarillo and that stretch, and so you'll see it developing in different stages during that timeframe as well. You see part of it right now with the 67 construction over across from Howard College that's being done at interstate standards as well. And also I-14, which is the Gulf Coast Strategic Highway Coalition, their forts-to-forts strategic corridor. And of course, just a reminder that those intersect in San Angelo, so the largest city without an interstate will have two interstates. The dynamics of San Angelo will change dramatically. In our industrial park, we're gearing up also for that. Of course, we have rail-served industrial park that we're looking at expansion into, but you'll continue to see in distribution additions to our business park. Phase one, there were no property sales. We still have about 17.6 acres left with seven acres under development. In phase two, we're opening up additional 118 acres, and we already have prospects for about a 10-acre addition to that already. As soon as we get that property, it's in the process of being cleared right now. So future needs, we'll continue to look at workforce development in conjunction with our Chamber that's doing a great job of really pushing that. We'll emphasize our quality-of-life initiatives as we have, being a Type B. We're not only recruiting businesses into San Angelo, we're developing quality-of-life projects. The airport's a prime example of that. Your Chadburn Streetscape project, others like that. And we'll also collaborate with our Development Board to update our Economic Development Strategic Plan with the Chamber. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Do I have questions for Guy from anyone up here? Seeing none, you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Good evening. Aaron Vanoy, Planning and Development Services. I'm your pinch hitter tonight for John James, who strategically decided to go on vacation. So I'll go over our Development Services and building permits, planning and GIS group. So here's some of our established goals over the last few years, talking about reviews timelines, review timelines in particular. Provide good information to citizens and applicants, effective and friendly customer service, ensure ordinances and processes mesh with our comprehensive plan and consistency in the development review process. And consistency is probably one of the biggest keys, is that each customer that comes in hears the same message from any one of our development groups that we kind of work with. So one thing that the city council invested in about five to six years ago was some plan review software to help us with efficiency and to help us with what's going on in our development review. And so we have been running any kind of project we can through our review software because it gets it out to our review teams all at the same time. So you can see, you know, lots of commercial plans, our plats, our site plans, and our design reviews are all going through there. Our residential plans are all going through there now, and even our engineering services has started taking advantage of this and doing all their infrastructure reviews in there, you know, new streets, new water lines, new sewer lines and stuff and things that are going in there. And they're able to see and say, hey, engineer A, we need to change this because of elevation or something. And so it's really working well. The local engineers and even our groups statewide like this software, they're getting used to it. It's easy communication with the reviewers, and it gets directly to whoever made that comment, not just somebody in the department. It gets back to that reviewer specifically. So some of our stuff over the last few years, commercial plan review, one of the things that we track is how fast are we doing those reviews? Our standard is a 21 calendar day review timeline. In 2021, we were down to six days. So within six days, those applicants either got a permit or comments back saying, we need changes on sheet two or sheet three. And then the second review, the average review for after submissions is five days. And so usually, within 11 calendar days, a person that's doing a commercial structure, which sometimes can be big, some kinds can be just minor things, within 11 days, they should be getting that permit. And so on the Development Services side, we track the timelines and we try to encourage our reviewers to, let's keep up with the timelines and keep going. And so we think we've done really well on commercial review. The next slide is our residential. Residential really just started in 2020 as far as going into project docs, and then we started getting more and more projects in there. Of course, 2020 was a very high year for residential, single-family projects, and you can see how high that number was, 726. That was because one project called Creek 27 had about 250 units that were reviewed as single-family residential, but really, kind of in reality, they're detached apartments. This year, we're probably going to be between that 283 and that 333 number for single-family units. We've through, we've done about 99 so far. Our average review time is 2.35 days, and that is very, very quick. If you look at some of the other cities around, Abilene is at 10 days for residential, Midland Odessa is at 15, and I'm sure some of y'all have heard other places that are even higher than that. So our staff is really doing well. You can see our planning timelines are staying strong. Our engineering services, even with the software, has helped them get it into a format that they can see and understand and make comments quickly. And so they're able to see that as a benefit to them. So we're excited that they're able to use that software as well. We have increased in our consultations and DRCs, and I think this is really critical because this is where we try to talk with the applicants before they even submit something and try to get them through not only the process, but what's really required and how what the real timelines are going to be. And I think that has really improved our review timeline because we're talking to them ahead of time instead of just getting some sheets of paper or some plans, and they really don't know what they turned in, and then it's taken review after review after review. And that's even helped with our engineering services who speak for water utilities and operations. So if they see, hey, there's a lift station that's got full capacity, they get to talk to them here before somebody submits something and say, hey, we've got to find a way to solve that lift station, or hey, that road's undersized, or whatever it may be. And so that's really critical that we get all those departments together and talk to those folks about what the, not only the challenges are, but what are solutions to help people to get through those processes. Some of our plan and ordinances updates, there was this last year, a expansion particularly to the west and northwest of the Central Business District, over towards Abe and Cohenheim, kind of a little bit to the west of the Central City District. We did do an update to our street widths and sidewalk ordinance that we worked with the Home Builders Association on and a lot of developers on, that they actually have some options of some narrower street widths, which actually helps the city in the long run because you have wide streets, you've got to maintain those for a very long time. If you have a little bit narrower street, you don't have to maintain as much. Each, at least the developer now has some options, where before they were kind of tied into certain things. In progress here soon, y'all are going to see the Interstate Highway Thoroughfare Plan Amendment, particularly for the north part of our town, that we've been working with TechDOT, that they have a kind of an approved plan, and so we're going to bring that forward as well as a downtown historic district overlay.
We stopped right there. Why is there such a delay? That was supposed to have been brought to council for approval in May.
Which one, ma'am?
The downtown historic district overlay.
I'm not 100% sure. I know the answer to that. I know that we were making sure that we did proper noticing, but I'm not sure if I know the 100% answer of why it was delayed. Okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, you already passed the deadline that we're supposed to, you'd sent out earlier, so why weren't you aware of those things earlier?
When we found out, we made sure that those guidelines are covered. If we approve something without following those, then it could bite us later. So we agree, we would like it happening sooner than not, but that's the only way we could get it done and make sure it was all done properly.
Problem. We needed it done.
I do know it is on the DHRC agenda for June.
They also moved that timeline on, Mayor, I think I forementioned on that, so the timeline got moved up because they could do the, I don't know, DHRC or Planning Commission, and then the council meeting was the day after that, and they're going to put it directly on that next meeting date so that there's no delay in there because whatever their recommendation is, we can verbally give to y'all. We don't need to wait for that to come in a report. We can tell you at the meeting.
We need to get it done. Whatever it takes, it needs to get done.
Okay. And then another option that they're looking at for particularly affordable housing, and we're really in the research phase of accessory dwellings in RS 1 and 2. We do have currently some rules in our zoning ordinance. Based on ownership and how large an accessory apartment can be, we like those types of things, but there's, there's lots of, if we pull our report on how many accessory dwellings are being built that don't have a kitchen, that's basically how they kind of do it now is they don't have a kitchen. Well, if you look in some of our newer neighborhoods, most of those have what they call a mother-in-law suite, but they just don't have a kitchen because our zoning ordinance doesn't allow two, two living spaces on one piece of property. Does that need to change? Maybe, maybe not, but that's something we're researching.
What happens if I convert my garage into an apartment?
It depends on what you're zoned. If you're RS 1, right now, you would not be allowed. And we don't know if that's good or bad. I mean, that's really something we need to research.
If I've already done that, what now? Because there's a lot already done. I, I mean, a lot of them already done.
There are a lot of them that are already done, and so they would be either legal, non-conforming, or maybe they're in a status that they shouldn't be renting that out. We are just a complaint basis of if we go and investigate. But that's what we're trying to decide. Well, do we have a lot of them out there, and do we go ahead and make them legal? Does that make sense?
Grandfather them in, in other words.
Yeah, do we grandfather them in? Do we, do we find a way to make it work? And so we are bringing that research forward.
What's the state say about that? Since we're always like, the state says, what does the state say?
Well, the state really doesn't have an opinion on it, since it's a zoning item.
You've got to be kidding. The state doesn't have an opinion on it? Well, that's got to be a first.
Well, it's a zoning item, and it's really, each city gets to choose their zoning ordinance on how they want it to work.
Until the next legislative session.
Yeah, they may, they may make a change at that point.
You've just prompted them.
But this is a, a lot of cities, I mean, Abilene has gone to where you can have two, an accessory apartment that you can rent out as well as your own living dwelling on one lot. They did that about five years ago. They thought they'd have a lot of problems, and they really haven't. They actually solved a lot of problems because they were a community that grew in World War II. And they have a lot of those existing things. And I think about our Santa Rita area that have those existing things. And well, how can we make those, those work for today?
Well, we need to be aware of what's already happened, and it's already happened. They're there, so we need to just move forward and make it, because they're there. We're not talking about something that might happen, it's happened.
Yeah, so we will be bringing forward some research and proposals to Planning Commission and ultimately City Council to decide what is best for our community in that respect. Some other things, I don't remember if we're, I know that I saw this, it said new building codes. I think we're on the 2015 building codes right now. We would have communication with our Development Task Force if there's things that they would like to see implemented or not implemented. I know sign ordinance is coming with some updates as well as cleaning up some of our things that might be a little more restrictive and trying to make them a little cleaner so that citizens understand how they can do things. Flag lots is a challenging configuration of how lots are laid out. Some of our areas have, you know, five or six little bitty five-foot slivers that touch the road, and then the big lots at the back. And so we're trying to figure out how, how to work through that because that crams a lot of infrastructure in a small piece of space at the very front of a lot, and there becomes property arguments and issues later down the road, and we're trying to solve those before they become a big thing. A simplified plating process, plating process is our infrastructure trigger, and infrastructure is our biggest challenge when it comes to development. Water lines, sewer lines, and streets, it just costs a lot to do those. As Shane and Allison have talked about, it costs a lot. And so for developers, it costs a lot. Is there a simplified plating process for some situation that makes this easier for developers to create new things? As well as our vested rights process, make sure that we're all up to date on vested rights. If somebody's got a preliminary plat from the 20s, is it still good? And those types of things. So we do have some housing development numbers because that's kind of been important over the last few years. You know, you can see kind of the multifamily's been a little bit mixed, but we have had some apartment creation over the last three years. We do know that there's about three different apartment complexes that are speculating right now that are either going through a plating process or are considering a plating process. One of them had an annexation off of Appaloosa Trail. They're looking at about, I think, 87 units out there, and so we'd have some more multifamily that'll be coming in.
Where's Wolf Creek on there?
Wolf Creek...
Is that 2022 that they're, they got their occupancy?
Well, they're getting their occupancy now, but they, I believe they... Well, they're getting their occupancy now, but they, I believe they permitted in 2018 or 2019. I think it was 2019 is when they secured their permit to build.
Yeah.
But they have started getting occupancy now. The first, I think, 15 buildings have certificate of occupancies is the last count I had, and so those.
When do we include them? When they, okay, so if they got their permit, still, it doesn't reflect it in here because you have Creek 27 and you have Wolf Creek, which the combination of those two would be over 400 units.
Right, and this is when the permit is actually issued, so we issued the permit not when they received their certificate of occupancy. Wolf Creek wouldn't show up in these because they were reviewed as single-family home because they were detached. They aren't attached apartments, and so under the building code.
What creek you mean? I mean Creek 27.
Creek 27, yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. But Wolf Creek, I believe they permitted in 2019 because it was right at the beginning of COVID, and they were trying to decide if they were going to move forward or not, and so they permitted each structure as one permit, and then they have approximately 20 units per structure. So that's some of the numbers in there.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Do we have an, let me see what it's called, an electric, an electric board, electrical board?
An electrical board?
To approve. For example, there are people in town that are going in and installing generators in people's homes without a permit to do that, and they don't have an electrical license here in the city of San Angelo, so when they do the work, it is inadequate, and it's ruining the entire electrical system within a home. And when it's been brought forward, they have, we have said back to them, unless we see them doing that work, we can't do anything about it, and yet people have paid to have these generators installed. So you would think just by the nature, they got an invoice and a company name, we could track down who these people are.
Yes, ma'am. That does sound like something that we should be enforcing, and so if you have some information, I'd be happy to stick around.
Well, I just got this weekend. I'll get.
Yeah.
Normally, they would all be required to get a permit to do the work to begin with, but if there's a company in town that's doing the work without a permit, then, you know, we can look into that as far as.
Yeah, that would be our standard enforcement, that we would go and, one, we would try to help the homeowner or whoever try to find a reputable company to, hey, let's get into compliance, find a way to get that fixed. But as far as going after the business or the contractor, if you will, we would certainly flag them as an issue in our system.
Yeah, in this case, it doesn't sound like they're coming in to get a permit, so we wouldn't be able to, you know, jump on them.
Yeah, I mean, I can read this to you, but it's kind of lengthy, but it basically says, this person went to this customer's house, and the man introduced her to the individual that was going to install this generator. She went inside her house, pulled them up, and went back outside and told them that they could leave because they were not licensed. She called the city and told them and asked them if they were okay with what was going on before she called these other people, and they said no, but nothing's happening to stop this company from going around and doing these generators.
City does not have a process where we have contractors licensed for doing business in the city, as I know.
Right.
So in this case, they wouldn't have to be licensed with the city to operate here.
I think this might be our last slide, talking about you single-family housing, again, looking at that number about 291, which is still a very strong number for San Angelo. There are a number of lots under development, particularly the south part of town, and yet we've done really, really well with infill development, even on the north side of town. We are working with our GIS systems.
Even on the north side of town?
Do what?
I just heard that phrase, even on the north side of town?
Well, yes.
Even part.
Sorry about that, Tom.
Okay, performance review.
Do we need to relook at the infill dollars again? I mean, there's two things that I hear. Number one, the infill's done really well, and we're out of money. And then number two, I hear from the other side of the coin, there's no more infill lots to do, so we need to relook at the areas of town that might need an infill program to better develop those areas. So I think it's just something we ought to look at as we move forward and see if those two issues are applicable. We need more, to put more money back into it if we spent the $200,000 a year. And then number two, is there another area of town that would be infill that we would like to see development happen that's not currently being done, because they're not in the current infill?
I think we can work with Bob Solis on that and get a report to you guys coming up soon and make some recommendations.
Okay, that'd be great.
I think that's it. Any other questions for Development Services or?
I'll just throw one kudos in, and you're aware of this, the other people in the room or not, the company which I worked for contacted me and said, oh, by the way, we hear you're on City Council, but our contractor is waiting on these permits and all of these things to go. And I threw an email 10 seconds later to Aaron, and it came back in three minutes, no, we're waiting on them to do this, 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 and that. And I think sometimes a lot of people throw the city under the bus park, I mean, planning, and just use it as an excuse for we're not doing this, and I just want to say thank you for your group because you changed that whole thing around in a matter of hours, and the whole perception on what was the holdup was nothing to do with the city at all, but we were waiting on them to get their stuff in, and you had it documented to a T, and it was a nice job. Thank you.
We certainly want to be very transparent, even when we're in the wrong, we want to be transparent for sure, and so that's how we improve, and I think we do have a really good team that's focused on trying to help the customer.
I just think we need to make sure that we're consistent because the biggest complaint I get is, he said that, she said this, what am I supposed to do because she won't let me move forward because he said whatever, and those are the biggest issues that I hear about now is someone holding it up with him because she said he didn't know what he was talking about, and I'm the boss, so no. I mean, we got to clear up that within the department permits and planning, that we're all on the same page, and we're not under a power struggle for the ability to give the authority to move forward. And it feels like there's a lot of power struggle going on there, and people are looking for their opportunity to.
And please, council as a whole, if y'all hear those kind of things, tell us, we love
Oh, I do. I'm quick.
And as with Toms, you know, sometimes we find that we have, that has happened where there's, but a lot of times we find where there's some misinformation that was not given out, and so we want to correct that, whether it's fixing the problem for them to move forward, or if we've done something wrong, then we'll correct it, but yeah.
We want it all to move forward, and we know that hiring staff is a difficult thing, so we need to try to make the system work. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from?
City council members.
Thank you, Aaron, very much. We're glad you filled in. Is that, does that include commercial development and industrial development because they were all listed separately? So that is all one presentation. Good we get to cross some more things off, this itinerary. That's good. Long-awaited Public Safety Police, Frank Carter, and boys, you're on.
Walking a little too fast.
Walking the fine line. And blue line, isn't that what we say? The first thing, Frank, I want to say is, we need to get added to the CIP plan, the police station, the new police station. That's one thing missing on the CIP plan. We need to get it on the plan. I'm not sure what number we use, but I think we just get a number sort of attached to it, and let's get, it's not that it's going to hold us up, but let's get it on the CIP plan. It needs to be added to that.
Thank you very much. We get started here and run through this. Our current numbers of sworn officers for 2022 were authorized 180 by council. We're currently at 170 officers, sworn officers. We just lost one that was going through training, decided he wasn't fit for the job. We got seven cadets in the academy right now that'll graduate September the 30th, and we have 32 civilian employees. Public safety communication, we have 14 total dispatchers as of May 9th, eight fully trained, two in training, and four in the hiring process.
I'll do some of this presentation. As we all know, one of the report cards that a police department gets on how they're doing is a city's crime rate, so that's what some of this presentation is about. So a little bit of history, Chief Carter was sworn in in July of 2016. 2016 was San Angelo's highest crime rate in recent history. There were 450 Part 1 crimes per month on average.
On what Part 1 is?
That's going to be larceny, unauthorized use of vehicles, aggravated assaults, serious crimes, sexual assaults. Over a four-year period, Chief Carter obtained 15 additional officers by working with city council and city management. Officers were utilized in areas that we saw a need, anti-crime, criminal investigations, narcotics, and traffic. Also, we were able to appropriately staff the patrol division for the first time in a decade. As a result, a cumulative Part 1 crime rate in San Angelo fell 44% or to 246 Part 1 crimes per month. So this is just a slideshow in our calls for service, and if it all works out, we'll have about 90, in the 90,000 range again this year. This was as April of 2022. Some of the things that were done with that increase in manpower, we increased the number of narcotics detectives. Illegal narcotics play a key role in many other crimes, violent crime included in violent crime. Narcotics unit has seized approximately 210 pounds of methamphetamine, six pounds of cocaine, and three pounds of heroin here in this city since 2016. In 2017, the SAPD started the anti-crime unit. It was designed to reduce the number, it was a proactive unit to catch crimes as they're being committed. They focused on repeat offenders who were continuing to commit crimes, and since 2019, that unit has arrested 521 individuals. The department increased the number of detectives assigned to criminal investigations division. We added child crimes detective and a cold case detective, and we did clear two cold case homicides by arrest. Traffic safety program, we changed the guidelines for the program. Officer, we looked at hotspots, areas of, there were serious, serious high-speed crashes, school zones, complaint zones, and this change was made to reduce the number of traffic accidents, and from 2016 to present, there was a 10% decrease in accidents. We implemented a DW, where we revived the DWI step program. They were training new software, and from 2019 to 2021, the DWI arrests increased 151% as a result.
This is basically a chart of the Part 1 crimes. If you look over there to the left column, Mayor, you'll see what the Part 1 crimes are, which is murder, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. These are the stats on Part 1 reported crimes from 2010 to present. Not included in that 44% decrease is the four months of 2022. We're tracking an 11% decrease right now. Future goals and needs, competitive pay, new law enforcement training academy, and refurbish the city hall annex, and move the entire police department there, or a new police building. Sure. It's there, it's been on there for several years.
It's been proposed, yes, ma'am.
But the dollars are different, so we just need to update it because it's not that huge big number. It still doesn't cost $6 million or below, right? So probably.
It's a much better.
Probably, so that's big on my priority list is getting that for that building redone and ready for you all. I think it's a really important issue. It's huge on my list of projects that need to get completed.
Not later, soon.
Mayor, I did want to point out as well that previously, the price tag for the police department or the station was about $40 million, so I know the guys have been working as far as the amount to bring that mountain down to a $6 million figure, which is much more manageable for what we, as far as the monies that we have, so we do appreciate that, guys, for doing that.
I just think the presence of our police department being on Boa Guard and Bryant Boulevard is key, and you've been living in a facility that, I don't think I have an adjective for it, but you might have, but it needs to be, we need to get it done for y'all. That's key. I think that's hugely important. Questions? Comments? Certainly the statistics that you present today, the city should be beyond proud of the work, the effort, the leadership, and those numbers speak highly towards the leadership, the plan of action for this city in terms of dealing with the crime. And in today's world of being a police officer, you've had a lot of challenges because there have been a lot of national issues out there, and you all have done a great job of staying positive, keeping focused on the job and getting the job done, and I have nothing but highest of regards for the work and effort of your all, leadership from Frank, Chief Howard, and Tracy, Chief Spencer, so thank you for that.
We appreciate it, Mayor. It's certainly a group effort from these guys down there, command staff, the first-line supervisor, but most credit goes to the boots on the ground.
It does.
The ones doing the majority of the work, both civilian and sworn.
But they're getting it done, and they do it because I think they have good leadership, and they're willing, they understand the plan, and the plan has produced the results that we need to see, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes, please, Larry.
I wonder, Chief, if you could talk about the competitive pay aspect of it. We, you did get a pay raise, but I'd just like to know how it's working with y'all guys and whether they believe that we're still, we got more work to do.
I believe there's more work to do. And I think if, maybe the next council meeting may come up as far as comparative cities and comparative pay.
Any other questions or comments for these guys? They've been around all day waiting for us to get to this point, so it'd be good if somebody had a question or comment because they've waited all day to do this.
Good job.
I will add this, it's getting very difficult to find applicants, basically, probably because of the environment we're in and the pay. We've had an opening for police applicant civil service test for about two months, and the last time I checked, we probably had 20 applicants. Historically, it's been a while back since we did it, but there was 250 people that signed up.
Life's changed a lot in so many ways.
And it's a national trend.
It is.
Police officer applications are down 60% nationwide, but we're seeing it here.
And certainly incidents have happened this past week have. Yes, please, someone else had time.
Frank, so when you're trying to get people to apply and come in, we're not really structured to bring somebody in laterally, correct? It's all about, so when you come in, you're starting at the bottom and coming up?
That's correct.
So the ability to get somebody seasoned in that you don't have to train, I mean, is there a cost when you look at what it costs to train somebody versus bringing somebody in that's already met the requirements? I mean, is that something, are you structured the way you want to be structured? Or is there something you need to do different that allow you some flexibility to pick up some people?
The only thing that will allow us to do the lateral program is basically through meet and confer based on civil service rules. A lot of departments are not civil service, or they do have meet and confer and the laterals in the contract. Most of these departments are putting the starting salaries very high because they're not having to invest $100,000 in the cadet, so that starting salary for whatever department is generally about $15,000 more than the starting salary here.
Answered my question. Thanks, Frank.
Sorry you guys had to wait all day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the good news is working? So the good news, I'm the last presenter. The bad news, I've got like 240 slides.
Pick your Tim Bess.
That used to be, Chief Brody.
Have those pinned marked.
We'll go through this as quick as I can. So let's focus on 2021, some of our accomplishments. Ladder 7, purchased in the tail end of 2020, placed into service in 2021. Ladder 7 provides aerial support to the southwest. Uh, ladder seven provides aerial support to the southwest sector of our city. And, uh, if y'all are familiar, we had an apartment fire, and this engine was the first one on scene, so very effective. We implemented a new health and fitness initiative. We purchased about ten Concept Two rowers, and if y'all have ever seen those, it is a very cardio-based, and it's a total body, total body workout. And, um, we purchased this equipment, established a mandatory training, training program, and then we created the annual PT test, kind of modeled after the DPS system. It's a percentage based on your age, your body weight, your height, and, um, our goal, our target goal, we set a baseline for all of our employees. We tested the entire department, set a baseline, and now our new target goal is seventy percent of VO, uh, VO2 max, and there's a whole bunch of science into that. But seventy percent means that you, you are in very good shape based on your age and your body composition and, uh, whether you are fit for duty, basically. So I'm not going to tell you my score. So TIFMS capabilities, uh, TIFMS, Texas Intrastate Firefighter Mutual Aid System. So there's two parts why this is a great program to be part of. Uh, first, it's a great, being a great neighbor. Whenever there is any departments across the state of Texas that need resources for catastrophic, catastrophic event or wildfire, they submit a request form through the, uh, TIFMS program. They reach out to other departments that can lend resources. We respond, and our city, our employees and our city will get compensated for that accordingly based on what is sent out. Uh, we increased our capabilities. Last year, we had about two engine bosses, and that's equivalent to like an officer on an engine. They command one or, or they command two to three personnel. Um, and then we had about twenty participants that met the requirements for TIFMS. We've increased that to a strike team leader, one strike team leader trainee who is almost completed. He will take a group of five resources with five engine bosses and five total crews, and they'll run an entire sector of a fire. We've increased our two engine bosses up to six engine bosses and forty deployable team members. And, uh, this first, the last three months of this year, we've been very active in the TIFMS program. We had units up in Wichita Falls. Our strike team leader went to Wichita Falls and ran an entire, uh, division up there. We had, um, when they finished in Wichita Falls, they moved down to the Abilene Fire. I'm sure all of y'all saw all over the news. We had units there on the ground making an impact in our state. We sent units down to the Sonora area called, it's a WPU program, Wildland Paramedic Unit. Uh, they were down there to provide support for other TIFMS units that were there, but they provided the medical side of it. Anyways, and a brand-new program called the REM Team, uh, Rapid Extrication Module. These are going to be required on every Type One fire event in the state of Texas. And there are only two REM teams in the state of Texas, and we are one of them. So any Type One incident, we're going to get called on that.
What's a Type One incident?
So like Abilene was a Type One incident, and, um, it's a big incident that they're bringing in federal units for. So, um, deployments, uh, we had one deployment in California and six across the state of Texas as of when I created this PowerPoint. Now we've got about nine deployments across the state of Texas right now. I'm looking very forward to what, uh, TIFMS develops into in the future. One of the benefits is whatever unit that we send, we get paid for that daily. Actually, we get paid for that hourly. In a very short period of time, not only do you recapture the cost of that unit, you're also putting money in the bank to purchase another unit. And, uh, you know, I think it's really important that this time of year, when we're sitting around talking about budget, that we're not sitting around with our handout. Like, I need more to run my organization. I need more to run my department, that we start exploring different avenues where our department can generate our own revenue now, um, to supplement our budget. And this TIFMS program is absolutely one of those resources, one of those programs to help us supplement and, um, move into the future and get state-of-the-art equipment that maybe wouldn't be available without this program. Our Training Academy. They've done some pretty neat stuff over there this year. Um, they've hosted two regional area schools for our local volunteer community, and I find this be, to be very, very important. We have sixteen, um, volunteer organizations that surround the city, San Angelo. And I don't believe a firefighter, um, their worth is based on whether they receive a paycheck or not. So I am very motivated to reach out to our volunteer community, find out what needs they have, help facilitate those needs. We have a four million dollar training academy. I would love for our volunteer community to come in, share that facility with us. We can all learn from each other and move into the future and maybe host statewide training at this, at our, at our new facility. Um, we hosted two National Fire Academy courses, and the National Fire Academy is up in Emmitsburg. Uh, we can send firefighters up there for training, or we can bring an instructor down here and train the entire region at a localized area, and it doesn't cost our city a dime to bring this train in here, and then our local personnel get the national training. So we hosted two of those courses, and I went to one of them. It was actually fascinating. So we started negotiations with TEACs. I don't know if y'all know what that is, Texas Engineering Extension. They are, um, affiliated with Texas A&amp;M. We've started negotiations with their command staff to potentially form an agreement for their annual fire school. So Texas A&amp;M is landlocked. They have, they cannot accept any more students for their annual school. What Chief Dunn had kind of set in a vision out for years ago is a partnership with TEACs. There are overflow students coming to San Angelo and living here for three months, food on a plate and head in a bed, and these cadets running through our fire academy, and they would pay us for that. Again, here's another revenue source. So it's very important to me to move forward with this TEACs agreement because it's a generating, a revenue generating, um, format for us. And then, of course, the picture in the background, I couldn't help myself. I had to put that in there. So that is a metal car that we set on fire, and it's got a propane system underneath it, and that is one of the requirements. TEACs has certain checkboxes that they have to meet, and one of the areas that we didn't have was one of these car fire trainers. And the picture up above is a propane tank trainer. TEACs is very specific with the curriculum that we have to meet, so that car trainer was instrumental in moving us forward for that.
Looks very realistic.
It, it actually, so what's really neat, and I don't want to brag too much, but, uh, that car trainer is fifty thousand dollars. We did not pay fifty thousand dollars for it because I'm an incredibly talented member of our department. That is a welder, and this, the, the plan came to me a couple of years ago, and I said, we need a car trainer. We gotta have one. When I was over the Training Academy, the battalion chief was there, we need a car trainer. Started pricing it. The, the burner system, the propane pilot system is twenty-five thousand, and that, I don't want the liability of building that because if something goes wrong and it points back that there was a problem with that propane prop, I didn't, I didn't want the city or myself to have that liability to build that. Now, the metal car is just bent and welded metal, but let's go back. You see the wheels?
They're outstanding.
See that? That is so cool. Uh, our, uh, one of our firefighters, he cut those fire axes out of there. All these doors actually function. The hood is counterweighted, so when you do lift it, it's not the full plate steel that you're lifting up. You can't see the front of it, but the headlights, it used to be one of the tactics that you bust, bust out the headlight to access a, an engine compartment fire. But like I said, one of our guys built this for seven thousand instead of twenty-five. So anyways, had to brag a little bit. So, uh, engine replacement, uh, we actually secured the funding for two new engines in twenty twenty-one. Engine five, actually, it was at the very beginning of this year. So Engine Five and Engine Three are set to be replaced. Uh, they are due to begin production in April of twenty-three with completion of June of twenty-three. Takes a really long time to build a fire truck. Our focus moving into the future is finalize this partnership with TEACs. I told you why I'm so passionate about that. It's a, a huge revenue source for our city and for our department. I want to start with the Basic Fire Academy and then see where that goes from there. Would like to, to have a discussion on securing funding for, um, to complete our firefighter bunker gear project. So the NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, has set out a standard that every firefighter should have two sets of bunker gear. Currently, we have about fifty percent of our department that has two sets. The NFPA has not made this a mandate, and the Texas Fire Commission has not adopted it. So at this point, it is still a, you should rather than you shall. So we, Chief Dunn saw the writing on the wall. This is going to turn into an unfunded mandate, and we need to get ahead of it before we have to buy a hundred and eighty sets of gear right now. So like I said, we have got about fifty percent of the department in two sets. In order to complete the project, we would need about ninety sets at about three thousand a set, so about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, fire truck replacement program currently, uh, we receive about two hundred and fifty thousand a year for capital allocation. We cash flow our fire trucks, and when that was originally established, a fire truck cost about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. Now they're about seven fifty to eight hundred thousand. So at the minimum, it's taking three to three and a half years, three to four years to get enough funding to purchase one fire truck. And, um, there's ten fire trucks. That's a thirty-year replacement. And back to the NFPA, they recommended ten-year replacement on an engine and a fifteen-year replacement on a ladder truck. Because of our maintenance program and our lower call volume, we were able to push that a little bit and, uh, push the, uh, engine replacement to a fifteen and the ladder replacement to a, to, to a twenty. But with the current allocation, it was just, just making it very difficult to stay on track with this replacement program. Oh, uh, Costa DC, talk to y'all about Interstate fourteen, twenty-seven, the railroad. Lots of activity coming to San Angelo, which is going to mean population boost and trying to get ahead of the issue because it takes a while to build a fire station. I kind of forecast in the next ten years, we're going to need two more fire stations, minimum two more fire stations. So now is the time to start looking for land and potentially trying to find funding resources to purchase this land. And, uh, they're not making any more of it, and the price keeps going up, so. And then expansion at the Training Center, this TEACs program. Uh, we need another classroom. Uh, right now, it's pretty, pretty jam-packed out there as far as classroom sizes and facility sizes. We would like to have about a seven thousand square foot training room, training classroom only. And then, of course, the ARF trainer, the aircraft trainer, that is a long-term goal. If we can get an aircraft trainer at that facility, DFW charges five thousand dollars per student just to go to, through their trainer. Now, this aircraft trainer comes with a pretty hefty price tag. But, uh, you know, Shane talked about grants, 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 grants. There are a lot of grants out there. And, uh, unfortunately, no, it's not unfortunate. It's actually a good thing, but a lot of the volunteer community gets, gets most of those grants. Of course, they don't have a steady income stream. In the last year and a half, two years, uh, Chief Fisher and myself have applied for four grants, and we've not gotten a single one of them. But we're not going to stop trying because the money's out there. We're just going to keep asking. And, uh, this aircraft trainer, the only way we're going to be successful and actually turn a profit and, um, is if it's funded through a grant. So we're continuously looking for an aircraft trainer grant so we can move forward with that program as well. You have any questions for me?
No, I think your focus for twenty twenty-three is probably far more aggressive than there's available funds, so I think you need to get some priorities established.
Yes, ma'am. I, I do have some priorities established on that, of the things that, um, absolutely need to happen, some things that should happen, and things that would be nice to happen, so.
Questions for Chief Brody? Thank you very much, and thank you for waiting around all day long as well. We hope you enjoyed learning more about your city today.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Patrick, I think PD was wondering if any of those rowers left over?
You're welcome to come by anytime and use them.
I'm thinking they could have a contest between PD and Fire Department.
All right. Well, we're moving into item E, which is establishing, confirming priorities for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three and funding options. Not sure why we would even be looking at funding options as a part of the conversation today because there's so many things that there's funding issues about, so we're not going to talk about funding options today. We're just going to talk about establishing and confirming the priorities with, without a doubt, there's no question that infrastructure is a number-one priority. And with infrastructure, it's very inclusive of drainage streets. Water's a very big priority. We've laid out a pretty good plan for water for the next seventy years, so I don't think there's a question there. Maximizing our assets, there is a game plan for that, and that's always been one of the, um, key priorities. And those are really about the planes, trains, and automobiles, maximizing our airport, making sure the engineering work is done so we can maximize Lake Nazworthy, which is a key, um, priority for us and economic development, um, project, maintain, uh, supporting the downtown historic district as a key part of our economic development strategy. And, um, with that, what else, Daniel?
The three priorities, Mayor, as I mentioned a while ago, they've been confirmed for the past five years. Uh, we, we do present this information like we've had in previous years, and it's obvious that council members have, uh, always decided that these are the, the areas that we should be concentrated on, and we should be. So at this point, it's just a matter of, uh, either just either confirming what we've already established or talking about anything else that may be added. But right now, typically in the past five years really has been, these are the solid ones, and we should concentrate on these.
Okay. With that, yes, Tommy?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, Daniel, could we add a priority or are we, are we, uh, whatever mandated? Do we have to, to stick with three?
No, I mean, you could, I mean, you could definitely add if that's what you want to do, if that's what you want to discuss, but City Council, we're just looking for that direction, and that's it, so.
I have been, over the course of the past year, I have become concerned more and more that we have not had a really discussion like we've had with some of these departments today with respect to our, our, and this isn't just about one year, but our overall compensation plan. I think we have issues at our entry levels. I think we have issues in our mid-ranges. And while Shane doesn't know, but he touched, I think, on one of our positions that's probably been vacant almost two years. It seems to me that we, as a council, should make as a priority a conversation, again, this isn't about just one year. Um, Chief Carter mentioned it, but let's, let's talk about our overall compensation, the structural, we have structural issues. So I have learned through conversations with different people, um, department directors, et cetera, that they have trouble not only hiring people, but even attracting people when, in fact, we have become our own competition or lack thereof. So I would like to see the council add as a strategic priority our overall compensation plan. That's me as one council member.
I think we can discuss it. I think last year, we made a pretty big step forward on that by doing the retained, what was the program we approved last year? Loyalty pay. That was a huge, big issue, and I say this that certainly personnel is one of the greatest assets we have, um, in this city. But I know that this issue of pay doesn't lie strictly with the city. It lies with every industry, every employer in the, in the state, in the city of San Angelo. It, employees are becoming short in terms of the numbers applying for jobs all over the place. Getting employees is tough. I don't care what industry you're in right now, and I don't think it means that we shouldn't reevaluate. But we certainly made a big step forward last year in the loyalty pay. That was a big chunk of, uh, money that was well-deserved and well-placed and good strategic move. So I have no problem, I mean, I think people are a priority. I think they're one of the, and I think we discussed it last year, maybe even a year before, that people are one of our greatest assets, and you can't get a lot done if you don't have employees. So I think it has to be a part of the conversation. We will at some point, through human resources presentation, talk about it, and we can ask further questions in terms of what we, other information we think might be needed or an analysis that might need to be done, so we're better informed.
I hope we don't just talk about it right here and then set it to the side and, and act as if we don't. So I'm going to say, Daniel, just as one council member to you as city manager, I hope this becomes more of a focus for us. I hope this becomes more of a focus for us year in and year out to make sure we are where we need to be. And I'm not candidly, I'm not sure where that is, but we we had never had a really, I'm going to say a hundred thousand foot discussion about the issue, the issues that exist today that maybe we could address that might go a long ways, Brenda, like you say, like the loyalty pay did last year. So I would request, Daniel, that y'all come back, and it wouldn't be just the HR department talking to us, but let us hear from some of the people that this actually affects day in and day out so that we can know how do we maybe begin to address these things? That's just, again, me as one council member.
Well, and we should, and I also want to remind everybody, seventy-one percent of the budget revenue goes towards employees right now. I mean, how much bigger can you make it and still have any money left over? I mean, seventy-one percent of the revenue stream that comes into this city through property tax and sales tax dollars and the other revenues, it's seventy-one percent of our personnel.
Well, and yeah, that is big, but again, I think that's going to even, Brenda, at some point, that's going to have to grow too because of all the new development that we're getting. At some point, we're going to have to start talking about more employees. Anyway, again, this is the kind of conversation.
Seventy-one percent of the revenue. So if you have increased sales tax and increase, you're already, if you stick with the seventy-one percent, it's more dollars because the revenue is larger. So the question mark is, how do we have that discussion? We need to have that discussion. We'll have that discussion and then decide what to do. But that loyalty pay last year was supposed to be a big step forward, and I'm hoping it proves to be that way. Yeah.
Don't let don't let it die on us, Daniel.
No, and definitely, we understand, definitely, I definitely understand because I do hear it myself. But on our part, and in preparation, of course, going into the budget as well, we can have information put together, ready to go, the City Council can review, and that's we can take it up at that point.
Well, and as as we hear from different people, again, not only HR, but, you know, give us some options to go along with, okay, here's some things you could do, or here's some things you might consider doing so that it's not just, okay, well, if we don't do this, then we don't do anything. But maybe some different ways to address some of the issues that that exist. I'm glad to have the conversation I have had with with employees that I'm sure you've probably had, but I'm glad to let you know what they told me, so I'm willing to do that.
All right. With that, do I have an announce and a motion for an adjournment for this meeting?
I'll move adjourned.
Yeah, I got it. Second by Tom. And any public comment on wanting to continue with this for a few hours longer?
We're done, Mayor.
If not, we're done.
Tina wanted us to stay another hour.